We do have two public comments, and I have taken judicial notice that we have these public comments, Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Judge Perez. They are in regards to the budget, so I'm gonna go ahead and hold on to those. We are waiting for Mr. Pereira to bring us that documentation, and then I'll have you forward at that time. Approval of minutes of regular meeting, August 24, 2023. Now entertain a motion.
Can I raise some?
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toguama. Is there any discussion?
Any favor?
Aye. Motion carries. Informational 2.1, discussion inappropriate, where there's not gonna be any appropriate action, but just informational. County extension, Agent Ms. Alyssa Cruz to attend the TCAA retreat on September 20th, 22nd, 2023 of '23. All expenses are to be paid by the State of Texas. I'm gonna recall 3.1 through 3.4. Approval of bonds. Thank you.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposition? Motion carries. Any public comments in regards to the county tax rate?
Judge.
Yes.
I made for a motion to go to recess.
I'll take a motion to recess.
Uh huh.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. The proposed tax is the .28500. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by.
Where do recess for the public?
Public comment on the budget, I do have Ms. Marisela Gonzalez, Dimen County District Clerk.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Mark, you can wait the mic.
I think we're good. Thank you so much. Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge, really briefly, what I wanted to come and discuss in front of the court is that when I came to my budget workshop in the summer, I had a distant concern regarding the increased cases, criminal cases, OLS and non-OLS cases, that have been filed in our office by the district's attorney. And with that increase comes a lot of work. Right now, my office only has one criminal clerk, and I had respectfully requested an additional full-time clerk. My budget did have a part-time, which I requested that be turned into a full-time. I'm looking at the proposed budget and that temporary, I'm sorry, that part-time position has been deleted. I don't know if it's because we're banking on us getting approval of the OLS grant. However, here we are today getting ready to adopt the budget, and we still haven't heard back from OLS. And so my concern is that the workload is still there, and I'll be out of a clerk. So I respectfully ask that you reconsider giving me that full-time position.
Thank you, Ms. Money. We have another public comment from Judge Sonia Guerrero Perez.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Good morning. It's been brought to my attention, or what I've heard, is that my proposed raise was being questioned because I have now been appointed the city judge, and I wanted to know justification as to why I wouldn't get a raise like the other justices of the peace. It is all equal. The only difference that I get is a $3,000 stipend. I know that, from the other judges, I know that I've come before Commissioners Court and the judge and previous administration under Frank, and never once have I heard a complaint from any of y'all that I'm not in my office, that I don't do my job. I hold civil, criminal cases, DPS suspension hearings, forfeiture of weapons, drugs, occupational license, inquests, magistrations, the list goes on, is my judicial duties. I do not just collect money on tickets. I am not a money-making machine, okay? That is, my job as a justice of the peace is to dispense justice and the impartial. It'd be great if I could just collect money, be revenue for the county, but that's not what I was elected to do. I'm elected to a job, and I've done it for 16 years. The constituents have believed in me, and I have proven myself time and time again. I was appointed administrative judge by most of you, the commissioners that are here, and by the previous administration under Frank, and never have I not done my duties or fulfilled my duties at that position. In fact, I bring back information for courthouse security, the refrigeration for our illegals for managing bodies. Alone that we have not sent bodies for inquest, I have saved the money, the county money in that. And the only difference in that stipend for the administrative duties that is being questioned is $1,279, which was the increase. I save the county $1,700 every time I don't send a body to Webb County for Dr. Stern, and I have done that since I came back to that training that y'all allowed me to attend. This is the first time I've seen fairness in the budget in a really long time, and I don't know if it's because it was a control of previous administration, but I believe that, I believe in each and every one of you to do the right thing, what's best for the community, to put personal issues aside. I know for a fact, I come to work, I see Commissioner Carmona in the morning, I see the other Commissioner Carmona when I'm here, when he comes in to leave reports, Commissioner Odena sees me on a daily basis, I hold court, the judge sees me, the people, I'm available to the people. This is not going to affect how I do my job. I am very professional, I am very fair, and I am very just. You may not like me, and that's okay. You don't have to like me, but we have a job to do, and that's to move Dimen County forward and work together, all of us. That's the only way that this county is going to move, is to put our personal issues aside and move forward. All other elected officials, there's several that have part-time jobs and even full-time jobs, are they not going to get their raises as y'all propose, or is it just me because it's Judge Perez? I respectfully ask that you reconsider your decisions if you are thinking that, because I think I have proven my job within the last 16 years and my judicial duties, and I have done it fair, I have done it just, and I have treated each one of you with respect. We may not have agreed on many issues, but I have respect for each and every one of you for the job that you do, because our constituents have put us here. Thank you.
I am going to, yes, yes, Mr. Ortiz, I apologize.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on my proposed budget. I am grateful that I did get my part-timer turned into full-timer. I am just asking that that position also get the $1.50 increase that everybody else seems to be getting, and also I have gone through the file, the proposed budget in Mr. Garcia's office, and even the positions that are not filled right now did get the $1.50. So I'm just asking that if somebody who is here also gets that $1.50.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Any other comments? I will take a motion to reconvene from the public hearing.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toguama. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3, adoption of the budget for fiscal year standing September 30, 2024. You make, Mr. Carmona.
Mr. Ms. Perez. Now I can answer something. You know, this is what rumors do. They get you all riled up, and it's not true. So before you make any accusations that we're gonna cut your budget, you should get the right information. Any elected official does either. That's how you stop rumors, that's how we get a working body together. It's, I know you understand what I'm trying to say. Next time, any elected officials got any questions, please feel free to call us. We have an open-door policy, all of us. And if I'm against it, I'm not telling you why. If not for it, I'm not telling you why. So please, next time when you hear rumors, let us know. Don't make something up where everybody thinks that we're trying to bully you, or trying to tell you what to do or not to do. We can't tell you, you're an elected official. The only time we can say something is when the budget is being briefed. And did we change anything? I don't think so. So, next time, like I said, before the rumors start, let us know. We're not prepared to answer them.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I wish that we all could have that kind of cordial conversation, and that I could feel comfortable to come to the Commissioners. Only a few that I feel comfortable speaking to without getting yelled at or being told things, so I appreciate that. I will know for future references, so.
Yeah. Peter.
Are you done? He's asking.
Yes. With all due respect, but we never expected any of the savings to be money-making tricks. We respect what you turned in at the, every month, with a report. If we would have had an issue with that, I'm pretty sure that we would address it. And sometimes we have addressed this a few times with you, which in fairness goes well. But never again, on my part, I will say that you need to bring in dollars for the charges, because that is something that is wrong. Personally, that's what I think, and they give citations. You have a system, you work with them, in community service or in KMA plan, but never expect me to tell you, you are money-making trick.
Thank you.
Now entertain a motion. For the adoption of the budget.
Okay, there's some corrections, I believe you made.
Okay, I'm in discussion.
As you know, some other corrections were made, Judge. One of them being, our vice chair, Ms. Gonzalez, I think she's asking for a full-time, so I will put it on the floor and ask if the other committees have.
There is a recommendation on the floor by Commissioner Juan Carmona in regards to including, we have it as a budget light item, Mrs. Gonzalez as a part-time position. That is the position that shows a zero on there, so I have a recommendation on the floor by Commissioner Juan Carmona to add the part-time position, excuse me. Discussion from the Commissioners.
Is that to add to her part-time from zero to a dollar amount?
No, it's a full-time.
As a full-time position?
On here, we have it as a part-time position.
You will have a part-time, right, Ms. Gonzalez?
No, sir, I do not.
You're asking just for a full-time?
Yes, sir.
That's why it was zeroed out. That's why it was zeroed out, because she's asking for a full-time.
But you didn't get your full-time. Correct?
Correct. And only just, so that I can have somebody there in case the OLS grant doesn't concern. And like I said before, we have had an increase in criminal cases, just to give you a rough estimate. By this time last year, the DA's office had presented 48 indictments, and this year we have 230 cases that have been filed.
Those indictments that are filed, they're purely OLS-related, smuggling-related?
They're both OLS and non-OLS cases.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Our agenda says adopt for fiscal year ending September 30, 2024. Can we add to it, or no?
This is where you make your changes.
I would like to know what other changes were made after we had Commissioners Court. We got this binder.
Correct. But that's what we're gonna go through right now.
And then we got this one today. So this caused me that there was more changes done after we had Commissioners Court budget hearing. So I would like to know.
After the proposed.
After the proposed, I would like to know what other changes were made to this budget.
That's what we're going through right now.
We're gonna go item by item?
We're gonna go item by item? We're gonna be here all day?
Right. That's what it takes.
Exactly.
We'll be here all day then.
Judge, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at the latest numbers Mr. Pereira brought in. More than anything, I'm concerned in the West Coast employees. I feel as a county, we need to take care of our people. You're talking about pay increases and elected officials getting paid increases, but I'm more concerned about the people that are out there, in the weather, performing the day-to-day job duties. And my concern at this point is, looking at Precinct 1, Precinct 1 is the only one that shows a deduction in personnel services. I've got $2,285 deduction. All of the other precincts have increases. I just need to understand how am I supposed to take care of the people that are taking care of Precinct 1?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Pereira, that reduction, wasn't it because you moved some of the positions over?
That wasn't covered. What are you talking about? Precinct 1, we're just focusing on precincts.
Right.
In two of our precincts. Not involving law courts, not involving nothing else. I show a $2,285 deduction, even from what I proposed on the budget. If you look at, last year it was budgeted for $219,000 personal services, and I'm at $217,000. That's a deduction. Is it not?
Because of your fringe benefits. The salary, you actually increased salaries. If you go from $115 to $125, the separate part-time did go down $5,000.
The longer they are here, shouldn't they make more for fringe benefits, longevity and stuff?
If you had somebody that is friend you, they don't get insurance for a couple months, so that's the biggest question.
I don't have any reason.
The salaries are, if you look at the back.
Please give me $10,000.
$8,000. If you look at the back, everybody's increasing.
Am I age 72?
Mm-hmm.
You actually got an increase.
It shows there was a $10,000 increase.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
On the permanent full-time.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the full total.
All of them.
I got.
I understand that, but did you drop two annual salaries to this year's? They're kind of a beast.
We all got cut on the, and it's a $10,000, but some of it had to do with capital.
On the part-time, I've got $5,000.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna start with the, yeah, exactly, exactly. I'm gonna go ahead and start with the county judge and Commissioners Court, Mr. Pereira. And a lot of these changes, Commissioner Toguama, to answer your question, I think, from my distinct understanding from this that Mr. Pereira just brought, was from some of the concerns that you guys had after we had the proposal.
Well, my concerns is still the same. Nothing changed, so nothing will happen.
So, yes.
I asked you, sir, to get with the judge and give him a next budget workshop. I asked you, before the budget came into this time, it was back in when we did the proposal of the budget, because at that time, we were discussing the salaries and saying we're gonna have a, if I correctly remember, we had mentioned that while everybody was going through their budget hearing, we were telling them we're gonna get back to the salaries, we're gonna have another workday. And somewhere, and I kept reminding you, said, no, this, I'm just, you're the one that's doing this, but with the help of the judge. But I kept asking you, sir, do we want to be in the position, do we want to be right here? And yet, you, I'm not gonna say you failed.
Okay.
I know you're a little confused, but.
First of all, this was something that Joe said, that Joe wanted to go with $1.50 per body, and that's what everybody has in there.
Mr. Pereira, can you turn the mic?
It's not $1.50 across.
It's $1.50 for all the employees. Anybody's been here over a year.
Then the ones that have been less than a year, they still got.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and go for county judges. Let's just go. County judges and county commissioners. Comments, concerns?
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
On your secretary, on your employees, there was more than a $1.50 increase.
Actually, it was not. If you look at 2022, 2023, this Commissioners Court approved a budget salary for the secretary for my position in the amount of $48,450. That is what this court approved during Frank Boonce's administration. If you go down there to proposed, I put $48,450. I just rolled it over.
So it's not a $1.50 increase?
It's not, it's no increase at all. It's no increase at all, because it's 4850. What you have to understand is that when I came into office, Mr. Frank Boonce had two secretaries, he had two positions on his budget. When I came to office, this Commissioners Court, along with Frank Boonce, took away my position, my departments, and left me with one secretary to do the job of this whole entire county. What I did to the detriment of that secretary, because you guys allotted $48,450 for a secretary, the previous secretary was making $69,000.
She was here for four, four years?
And I understand that, and I understand that. However, you guys budgeted $48,450 for the new secretary, and by law, the scope of my authority as per the government code, I can pay up to 4850, because that's what the budget allows. However, I did not, Commissioner Toguama, to the contrary, to the detriment to my secretary, I hired her at $11 an hour. I did $11, so I have money left over. I quickly realized that my secretary could not do the job, she still cannot do it, contrary to what anybody thinks. It's a lot of work, and she still cannot do it. So what I did, at $11 an hour, that puts her at $22,800. I was gonna have money left over. So what I did was I hired a part-timer. So I'm having two secretaries out of one budget, out of one budget, $48,450, and my second secretary is a part-timer. So I'm paying two people out of one budget that you guys did. So what I'm doing is, I'm requesting to get my court coordinator back, just like Judge Boonce had before my time, and Mirta is staying the $48,450. Does that mean that I'm gonna pay her $48,500? No, it does not, and I've advised that with her already. But it is my discretion, within the scope of my authority, to pay her up to $48,450. And I stand here before the public and before Commissioners Court, court under oath, that I have already advised. She understands, she's not gonna get $48,450.
So is she gonna get the $1.50 to make it a total $450, that's enough?
She is gonna get whatever I think is what she deserves in my position, based on the research that I've done for county judges, administrative assistants from LaSalle, Frio, and Maverick, and Savala. She, I have her at $35,000. She, I have her at thirty-five thousand dollars from that forty-eight. Because when I did the research for the administrative assistance, LaSalle County makes fifty-two thousand, the administrative assistant. Frio County makes fifty-five thousand. Maverick County makes sixty-two thousand. Savala County makes thirty-eight thousand, that's their administrative, and they've all been their first-year administrative assistants.
That's where it comes back to what Ms. Rueda said, are we gonna change the pay scale? Are we gonna increase these employees? Because I understand, everybody deserves a raise, I understand she works, you're the only one that knows what she does and what she doesn't do. We don't know, we know what our secretary does. I'm sure Judge Guerra knows what her secretary does, Mary knows what her secretary does and how much they work. But we're, what I'm saying is, okay, you're working an increase, more than a dollar fifty, because that's your secretary, I understand, everybody knows she's getting paid more. Then are we gonna give everybody else the same dollar a month? Because I'm sure they think their secretaries are worth the same.
And that's why when we have the budget and budget workshops, they request, what they request, I simply just put forty-eight fifty. And my distinct understanding is when you guys approved this budget last year, under the, under the understanding that whoever came in next was worthy of getting paid forty-eight four fifty. That is what you guys approved.
So then from the eleven, I mean, I don't know if we can discuss these, but you have to come in some with the secretaries. Because here it doesn't say eleven dollars that she's getting paid that.
No, I said I started her at eleven dollars.
Okay, well, she's not making eleven right now.
That's correct, she's not.
And that's what I'm saying, this is where the morale starts with our employees, our secretaries, because, I mean, and I understand, like Judge Guerra said, we, that last year or the years before wasn't fair, that we're not being fair. It's not that we're not being fair, sometime, we would do our budgets, and it's the same thing that happened this time. You all, Mr. Pereira, the judge would take the budget, change numbers, when it were, we approved it in Commissioner's Court, on the budget hearing for the proposed, and then they would bring back the proposed, and it was a different number that we discussed. So that's why I'm saying, why are we getting another one when we had already discussed our proposed budget?
This was a proposed budget that was, that was, that was approved, that was approved when we filed the proposal. The numbers haven't changed, I didn't change no numbers for my staff. Those are the numbers, those were the numbers that were proposed.
Then why are we getting a different proposed budget if the numbers were being changed, not to change?
These numbers, some of these numbers were changed in other departments, not in mine, my department didn't change. They, they, those numbers are the same numbers that were in the proposed.
I mean, I know Judge Guerra says now that it's fairness, we need to make sure they're fairness, because if others are getting paid more, or others are gonna get the dollar fifty more raise, I mean, we need to make sure that we're doing it the right way. For other reasons, it wasn't done years before, I mean, we need to make sure, before, because the public here is low, low, they said, oh, they give it to only a certain people that they want.
I agree with you.
They're in their plan, they give it to them, because they must suffer.
I agree with you.
And that's not the way it should be, because then the morale of all employees, elected officials, and our secretaries, our road and bridge, they all say how much they get paid, as soon as we get out of here, they're gonna know the race. And they're, they talk fast, so they're gonna know, they're gonna say, well, they gave the department, Mr. Rueda more or less, and the other one's like, that is. Because at the beginning, you had a pay scale, a pay scale that I know of, it's still in effect, but we're not following it.
That pay scale has never been followed, Commissioner.
That's what I'm saying.
Not, not today, not yesterday, not the day before, it will never follow.
It's been followed, so we need to make sure that if we're gonna give a raise or change a dollar a month for starting pay, we need to do it now. So that way, everybody's in the same pace. And I understand some of us have been here two years, three years, five years, ten years, we have Medina here for twenty-some years, certain people for thirty years. Geez, I mean, we need to make sure that we treat our employees correctly, because if not, we're gonna lose them. McDonald's, HEB is paying seventeen dollars, and our starting pay is eleven dollars, eighteen dollars.
You're, you're absolutely correct, and I did the research, I did the research on that.
Sanitation, they were in the hot, in the heat, when it's cold, when it's hot, the deputies, their starting pay, I mean, eleven dollars, really? Heavy equipment operators, I can't find workers for eleven dollars. So if you all wanna go out there and say, oh, they're giving raises or whatnot, Eddie, see who wants to come work for us for eleven dollars, because nobody sure wants to.
I agree with you.
So we need to make sure, we're gonna change the, the budget or the pay scale, we need to do it now and increase it, like everybody else.
Can I make a comment? Actually, this budget brings it up to twelve dollars minimum, and there was one change in the county judge's office, and that was to hire a, to release it, or the secretary, or the PO. Aside from that, there was nothing.
To hire a PO secretary.
PO secretary. And then aside from that, there was nothing changed, but it did bring it up to twelve dollars minimum.
Can you explain the PO secretary?
We're under it.
Oh, we're under it.
Under the secretary.
And, and you just, it's under there.
It is under there.
If it's under there.
And for the record, you know, when we voted for this, there were not two secretaries for Judge Bonce. It was a secretary and a court coordinator, okay?
That's what I'm asking for.
There's two different deals because we say there were two secretaries, you all are gonna mention two secretaries, you didn't hear that the coordinator, no. Both of them made Judge Bonce's, Judge Frank Bonce's secretary and court coordinator, uh, two secretaries.
So, Mr. Pereira, before we continue, and Judge, I just wanna make sure we can change or discuss the pay scale that we're gonna give before we go over the budget? Or how is it that we're gonna have to do it?
So, right now, the, the proposed, the proposed budget starting pay was, is twelve, because we're at eleven, is twelve. As I mentioned to you, I did my research, and you're absolutely correct. Starting pay at HEB is fifteen dollars an hour, Night Stalker, eighteen dollars an hour, Walmart, fourteen dollars an hour, Sonic, fifteen dollars an hour, McDonald's, fifteen dollars an hour, Savala County for their employees, fourteen dollars an hour, Maverick County for their employees, fifteen fifty-nine an hour, LaSalle, fifteen dollars an hour. And we're at eleven dollars, so I a hundred percent agree that we should, we should take care of our employees.
So we do it now or?
Yes, we do it right now. If you want quality employees, you have to be competitive in how you pay your employees. And I, and I, I agree one hundred percent.
Judge, Judge and Commissioner, we have to be very careful. This is not a money-making county. We're here to allow the people to earn what the constituents of all of us think they ought to earn, not twenty dollars. We got, I hate to say it, we have some that don't do much, and they're way up there. So we need to be very careful on how you address this. HEB makes money.
Again, Commissioner, again, again, going back on your statement, that we have to address it how people work. You can be here a year and be here twenty years, and the person that's been here a year might outwork the person that, that's why we look at, when we're doing the budget, and when you're looking at how you're gonna pay your employees and your staff, you have to look at it from that perspective. Because Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Hernandez does work for the entire county, including commission with POs, with agenda, though, she's not just a secretary for one precinct. She's not just a secretary for one department, she does the entire thing. So when you look at it, you, I'm sure, because I know Judge Frank Bonce. I know that when he made this number last year, forty-eight four fifty, he did it to reflect on how much work Ms. Letizia Carmona had, and you know that. So when that forty-eight four fifty was approved by this court and proposed by Judge Frank Bonce, was a reflection of how much work that position was gonna, you cannot compare one secretary to another secretary to another secretary, because every secretary does different work. Melissa Medina was.
I'm not questioning the work, ma'am, you gotta understand one thing, I'm not against the lady, your secretary getting a raise. What I'm saying is, that these companies you all mentioned, they're there to make a profit. We're not here to make a profit, we're here to run the county to the best of our ability with what we got. Just remember, just remember one thing, okay? Right now, we're blessed, the, the, the oil company's here, so we don't have a problem doing our budget. Right now, we got extra money, what happens when the oil field stops? Sure, we got some money in the reserve, you're paying twenty-eight cents to the dollar, when that happens, guess what? All the other counties are at seventy-five, eighty cents for the county alone, we're at twenty-eight. What's gonna happen when that thing stops? We're gonna raise our, what's the first thing people are gonna say? They don't know what the heck they're doing, they're gonna raise our taxes, and we all are gonna start complaining, because our taxes are going up. That's the only thing I gotta say, just be careful. How much money we're gonna give, how much money we're gonna save, because eventually, it'll end, and we're gonna, when we start lowering salaries, we're all gonna get hungry, because we're doing wrong. But right now, we're all, we're all happy that we're getting a big raise, we're all happy that we have money. And that's all I have to say.
Judge, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
We, we all, elected officials appreciate the work that everybody does under their, their departments. However, I know that it was mentioned that if you have an employee in your paying, so and so, he's not performing properly, it's up to the elected official to correct it. That's how I feel, uh, if I feel that one of my men is not doing right, I am gonna approach him, and I would acknowledge that he's got a choice. Am I gonna stay with the county and do my job, or am I gonna just go ahead and leave? We're not running enough, but you're bringing, you're, you're bringing the attention to that employee. So, as I feel, and once again, every elected official is responsible for the employees. It's not for me to come in and say, uh, Joe's sitting there and, and the elected official there says, they're telling him, hey, employee, but you don't know what he, what he did at that time, why is he doing? Did he lift it something, or they tired, they were doing extra work? I don't mind him sitting down to relax for a little bit, but I'm not gonna come and judge an employee for Mr., excuse me, with Mr. Garcia and tell him, hey, they're all just sitting there talking. You know, this, I see it as, as, again, once again, the elected official is responsible for the employee. And I respect the employees, because they, they do their job. And like you say, all types of weather, or when, I'm not gonna say wait till God keeps it cool and we'll go out there and work, no, it's, he held you around. And that's what my statement is.
Commissioner Toguacava, you're gonna propose?
Can we do it a rate?
For the hourly rate?
It's at twelve right now, right?
It's eleven.
Eleven dollars?
And the proposed was twelve.
The proposed is twelve, at least thirteen dollars or fourteen, I know, Mrs. City's at fourteen.
Correct.
We have to approve it for this.
They, they just approved the budget, correct?
I'll second that motion.
I'm just one vote.
Thirteen.
I would second Commissioner Toguacava's motion at thirteen.
Question, how about our CDL drivers? And how, is that, if we approve a thirteen-dollar hour range for the new, uh, what do I want, does it come in with a CDL? Are we gonna increase that to dollars more, or is it gonna stay at a dollar?
No, you're talking about the minimum wage right now.
No, I'm talking about the minimum wage, but what about the?
If you wanna change the CDL, you need to do it now too.
That's what I'm asking you.
You need to get this done, and then come back to CDL.
Judge, ma'am, say something. Judge, I feel we're always gonna have this issue, unless we ever come up with a job description and a minimum, a top and bottom pay, because we can't treat, I, I understand fairness, but I, I've been asking an important explanation, how do you treat a person you hire to mow grass that does maintenance, to a guy that's gonna come and run a toaster and a blade, and both starting, you can't start them both at thirteen, even if it was fourteen.
Exactly.
You have two hundred and thirty thousand dollar machine with a thirteen dollar an hour operator, if you're lucky, you might get somebody who's willing to learn and, and take off. But it's, it's not the same, there's no way you can make the comparison in, in, in these individuals. From, from a CDL driver to, to a maintenance guy that mows grass, not, not trying to talk better or less than anybody, but it's the fact. You can't, unless you establish a job description, and for that specific job description, you have a minimum starting pay, and you hire, and of what's the highest this person can get to at that specific position, we're always gonna have this issue. Because we talk about fairness, but you can't treat everybody the same, you can't, you have experience, you have education, those things come, take, come into effect. And we're always gonna have this issue, whether it's fourteen, twelve, or eleven dollars an hour, like, just like you mentioned, what about CDL? Wouldn't, you know, somebody has a CDL, just invested probably a bunch of time on a truck to gain experience to be able to drive that truck. And if, I mean, how many CDL drivers do we have? It, it's, it's hard, it's, until we get this established, the right, the way it's supposed to be, the way most of these government agencies have it, and we're always gonna be running into, into this obstacle.
Judge, if I may, you know, you said that a lot of people and, and Commissioner Toguacava stated that a lot of people have been here, and they're earning less than what they're supposed to, but let me remind everybody, all of our commissioners, you know, the elected officials, who we gave raises. You all said, we're satisfied with three percent, I wasn't satisfied with three percent, so I made a case for my employees. Okay? So it's not our fault that some of these people are not making what they're supposed to, when their elected official is not speaking up for them. And I reminded them, I told them, speak for your employees. Did they? Okay, so we're not, we're not complaining for them not making what they're supposed to be making. The elected official had to come in and say, my secretary deserves twenty dollars an hour, because she's doing this, 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 and this, and this, and helping you out, now, that's understandable. But when we say, we, I say, Commissioner's Court say, everybody's getting three percent, but the elected officials standing right before us, do you think three percent is fair? Yes, that's it. So be it, that's the whole problem, we're fair. But why can't speak for the other elected officials? A lot of them just say, whatever you wanna give, that's it. Okay, fine, so be it. I hope you understand what I'm trying to say, because a lot of people say the Commissioner's Court, they don't care about it, Commissioner's Court says this, Commissioner's Court is after us, you know, talk to your elected official, and we'll correct it, thank you.
Can I make a statement? Um, Commissioner Carmona, I just wanna address what you just said. I've been lucky enough to give the three percent to my employees. My only concern is now, some of my employees are not making fourteen dollars, if you wanna propose a starting pay of fourteen dollars. What's gonna happen when we hire somebody new, starting them at fourteen dollars, when we have employees that have been there for years and are not making fourteen dollars? Are we gonna raise them up to fourteen dollars today, just to be fair? So that's just my thought on that. And I think for myself, and I don't know about the other elected officials, but, you know, I do wanna take care of my employees. So that's just what I wanted to state.
And going back to Ms. Carmona, as a matter of fact, Commissioner Toguacava, we approved in the proposal to give her a full-time position, and that full-time position was approved in the proposal to start at thirty-one thousand two hundred. So again, that goes against us starting at eleven dollars an hour.
Judge, I think that salary is for.
I have, I'm sorry.
So we can make the pay scale.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, we need, we need to make sure that, we have a, a pay scale, but we never have followed it. So if we're gonna recommend a pay scale, it's gotta be at another time, you can approve the fourteen or thirteen or whatever you want now, but like, Commissioner.
It has to wait till next year, correct? And, and I, I agree, I, I wholeheartedly agree, it has to work the way, and, and that's what I mentioned at the proposal. We said we have this pay scale, we have this pay scale, you cannot have a pay scale, you just can't, because you have job descriptions, and you look at the job descriptions, and you attach a number that the Commissioner's Court we approved is reasonable with that job description. Because we can't, I can't, we can't stock our mechanic at eleven dollars an hour at the metro, that's insane, no one's gonna come work for eleven dollars as a mechanic, when the oil field, you're starting twenty-something dollars, it's insane, and that was the pay scale that was done before my administration, and I've been trying to change that. I understand, we're trying to be financially conservative, and I get that, and I, and I appreciate the previous administration for, for us having that rainy day fun, but we have to keep up with the times, and eleven dollars is not keeping up with the times. We just, I mean, I went and bought groceries the other day and I literally just bought fruit. No meat. And it was seventy-eight dollars. Seventy-eight dollars. And it was just fruit and veggies. We have to, I understand Commissioner Gunwana, what you're saying, the oil field might die down. I went to the Judges Consortium last Thursday. And they predicted with all the oil field people that are there, they're predicting another two to six years to keep going in the Eagle Ford Shell at least, which is where we're at. Let's take care of our people now. And God forbid in six years it does go down. And we have to make adjustments at that time. And at that time, I hope that our constituents, our taxpayers, our employees can understand that it's not a personal or a political reason why we're cutting budgets or salaries or employees. It is because the facts, the numbers are there that we are losing money because we don't have any more to go by at the point twenty-eight percent tax rate. For right now, we should take care of our people. And I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Drogba that we do thirteen dollars an hour. Mr. Pereira, we have the budget reflecting twelve dollars an hour. Thirteen dollars is what we initially had said. We didn't know if it was something that would be approved. But I think that thirteen dollars is the way. And I agree that for our next agenda, our next budget, and starting tomorrow, we start working on job descriptions. You, all your precincts, all your departments, give me your job description of what you think they should get paid. Same thing with commissioners. And you tell me what you think your guys should pay. And then we put it on the table. And if it's fair, it's fair. And if it's not, it's not. And put all the politics aside, all the personal vendetta or whatever it might be. If you think that a mechanic should get paid fifty and that's what we think is reasonable, that's what it is. And that's all we can tell our constituents. That we're being fair and that we're being reasonable. That's all I can ask for. Because if we keep going that, well, my secretary gets this and your secretary gets that or his employee, we're gonna be here really all day. We will be here, maybe till tomorrow. Because that's just what it's gonna boil down to. And the best way moving forward financially sound and legally and with all fair and justice is that we do, moving forward, is a job description. From the person that should make the less to the person that makes the most. That's the job description. And that's what they get paid. And perhaps maybe we won't have as many vacancies. Because I can tell you this right now. It was like pulling teeth just to get Julissa as my part-time. Because nobody wants to work for eleven dollars an hour. And I'm sure y'all have the same issues that nobody wants to work for eleven dollars an hour.
Judge, I just wanna let the public know, I don't base my decision on politics. I always put that aside. And I feel good, I've been here ninety years. You can go back to see the budget. And I voted against the budget for three times. Three times. I vote the way I wanna vote, the way I think it's right and correct. I don't go based off of anybody's, he said, she said, or they tell me. No, I go the way I wanna vote. I personally vote the way I want to. If you don't believe me, I voted against the budget three times for the past, some three years. You can go back and check. So I don't bring politics into my share. That stays out of here. I treat everybody with respect. I see how you guys work. I sometimes visit you. Sometimes I don't. But I see you out there and I've always said, whatever you need, I'm here to help. Done it to Ms. Mari, to Ms. Perez. Ms. Sandoval, I've always asked you, you always come and ask me. Mr. Ibe also. I've gone to the sheriff and asked, what do you need? What do you guys need? Even to DPS, now that we have the ranger, I haven't visited with him. But I've always asked you guys what you need. I've asked Mr. Martinez also. Letty. So my door is always open. I'm just trying to be fair here to see that we pay the way we... I mean, I know we can't pay you guys fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars like we wish we could. No, we can't. We have a new law that passed for next year for homestead. Homestead, if your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, you're not gonna pay for less taxes. So what is our budget gonna come down to? That's where we're gonna suffer. And it'll come back to us. But I understand eleven dollars, it's nothing. I'm sorry. I mean, we're trying as best as we can. But anything like the elected officials say, a dollar, two dollars, it's good. Three percent, we've done three percent before. We've had years that I've been here, nothing, zero percent. And we were happy with it. Everything's changed, everything's increased, and it's gonna keep ongoing. And it's gonna keep increasing. So we're here to help. And whatever you guys need, just let us know. And we're working our best to help you guys. Thank you.
Thirteen dollars an hour. Commissioner Drogba, thirteen dollars an hour.
Yes, ma'am. I'm on the seat.
Any other questions on the page seven? We're gonna go, yeah, the next.
The position you added for PO secretaries for what?
Yes, sir. For the PO position, I'm sure as many of you, and it's with all due respect to all four of you guys, you have made it very known to my office that we don't get the POs rapidly enough out to Mr. Pereira's office. And I will, with all due respect to Mr. Pereira's office, they sit on them as well. There's so much, Mr. Pereira. No, I'm not joking, I'm being dead serious. We get over a hundred POs a day. And one individual, which is my secretary, cannot do it alone. And I just wanna remind this court, remind this court that my previous administration, Mr. Ponce, he had one secretary, one court coordinator, and he also had Ms. Medina helping him with the POs. So in fact, he had three ladies helping him with the POs or with his job in administering the operations of this county. Again, I have two. Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Alvarado. Ms. Hernandez tries her very best to get those POs to you guys as prompt as possible. On top of doing agendas, on top of doing courts, on top of doing the trainings, on top of doing all the other things that she's trying to do. So it was a recommendation by our county auditor that we're actually acting this precinct one commissioner, Mr. Odena and the auditor, to have either a part-time or full-time position that would handle all the POs so that we can expeditiously get them out there to the sheriff's office, to the tax assessor, to Mr. Garcia, to every department in this county, without them sitting there for days or a week or so. And so that is why that position was put on there. I'm requesting for it to be approved. It was not a recommendation. I had to be quite frank with you. I had already had the discussion with my secretary. And I told her, you're gonna have to keep doing POs. That's part of the job. And when you get to them, you get to them. And I would hope that you guys would understand that she's gonna get to your POs as fast. Obviously, when it comes to emergency POs, they're done immediately. But all the other POs, and I say we get over a hundred POs a day. And Mr. Pereira has, what, six in his office? And they get to work with all the POs? I have one to work. To work on those POs. And so it was a recommendation brought up by Commissioner Odena, Mr. Pereira. I thought it was a good idea. I put it on here. If you think that it's not a position that needs to be put on there, then y'all don't have to vote on it. But just be under the understanding that it's gonna still continue to take some time so that Ms. Hernandez can get to those POs.
Judge, would a part-time or a full-time be offered?
Part-time will work for me as well. I just need, it's not really for me, Commissioner, because to be honest with you, I have one department under me, which is my staff. So I don't put POs in, other than the POs for my trainings or for supplies. The PO system is for the luxury of you guys and all the other elected officials in department, not for me. So for me, if you guys wanna give me a part-time, thank you very much. If you wanna give me a full-time, great. I'm just trying to be effective and efficient with the staff that I have. And for me to be effective and efficient, I need for me to have a PO person so that you guys can be happy and get you guys what you all need. That's really what it is to work with you guys so that the POs can go faster.
She'll be approving the POs.
Excuse me?
She will be approving the POs.
She will be approving the POs. And in the alternative, if there's other work that needs to be done, she'll be doing other work as well.
Now, my question, Judge, you have her for twenty-two eighty-eight. Now that we've said that it's thirty dollars an hour, is that an increase?
That would be, yeah.
Well, if you wanna full-time, if you don't wanna do a full-time, obviously it'll be a part-time.
But even though, it'll be a thirteen.
Correct, sir.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct, sir.
That's why we're making the adjustments.
That's why I'm asking for fifteen dollars.
But my only question was, Judge, if we give you a full-time, you're crowded as it is. So where are you gonna, you gonna find a place to put her away from? Put her in an office?
I thought about that too, Mr. Gunwana. And Mr. Odena, since there was a recommendation from him and Mr. Pereira, we would house her at his office. Ms. Medina, I'm sure would not be bothered by having another person there. There's an additional office there. I mean, you've seen my office. There's no space. I mean, if I have to put him in the hallway, I'll put him in the hallway.
The way I see it, it's very crowded in there. Even for two secretaries, it's very hard. So if you got a place, that's fine.
And is this for a full-time or a part-time?
Full-time. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yes.
Judge, I believe this position would pay for itself. When I say that, I'm not talking about making money with it. But the PO system, the way it's designed on our, us, Commissioner, for example, on a day-to-day operations, we run across things that we need, whether it be a water leak, for instance. And the process requires that we have a quote first to obtain the PO. So it's all time-consuming, especially if it's a water leak. If you find out at four o'clock in the evening and it's almost gonna be five and the store closes. So I feel that this is, you know, in the sense of nickel holding back the dollar, this is kind of one of those things that is gonna benefit everybody that has to operate on a day-to-day basis through the PO system.
Any other comments? Anything else on page seven? I'm gonna go to page eight. County clerk. Any questions?
Judge, I'd like to ask or remind that there are two empty offices in the old courtroom.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Red free.
Red free, he says.
You okay with your question?
Yes.
Page nine, Veterans Affairs.
Judge, and then when I have a question. The young man has never come before Commissioners Court. He never has given any progress reports. And yet, the county is paying him, of course, is not much. But the other day, when the Veterans Affairs came in, you know, we couldn't say nothing because it was under the public comment. But I still wanna see what the young man's gonna do. Because I know that I had talked to Ms. Carla or Ms. Ortiz. And there's a lot of grants out there. And he hasn't come by or has to do this or that. So I was just wondering if we can get somebody else. Of course, like I say, it's not much, four thousand a year. But, you know, it's something.
And we're working on that. I've had this discussion with Mr. Pereira in bringing in the current appointed person. I agree with you one hundred percent. I've spoken to both Congressman Gonzalez and Senator Poland from Washington. And we are really big on wanting to bring Veterans Affairs to Dimmitt County. I think it's important that we honor and respect that office of Veterans Affairs. I've been able to travel to other counties and they actually have an office for Veteran Affairs. And they have all these events and they have all these opportunities for our veterans. I've been given information from Tracy King that our veterans are going to Savala County. They're going to Savala County to get services. Why can't we have it here in Dimmitt County? Like, I think that's important, that they come to Dimmitt County because they live here. Why burden them more? I know it's just ten miles down the road. But if we have that on our budget item, we should be able to utilize that service. So I do plan on bringing Mr. Davis in and having a discussion with him and bringing him back before Commissioners Court. And if it's a vote that the commissioners want in conjunction with myself to appoint a new person, then the law allows us for that. It is a yearly basis. You're absolutely correct. In November, in November of this year, it's, every November, the contract, or not a contract, but the appointment, as per the law, allows us to reappoint somebody. So if there's anybody in the public that knows anybody that would be interested, please have them contact my office. Page ten. Any questions?
I'm a little confused. The judge is giving only four thousand dollars payment.
That's a stipend that we give. They get paid through the state of Texas. Yes, that's just a stipend that we give.
The elected official?
Yes. It's a stipend that we give. And if you can see, that's the amount. And I asked Mr. Pereira the same thing this morning. And he told me that that was an amount that the previous judge, Ponce, had put on there. And we just went ahead and carried it over. Page eleven, any questions on page eleven? Page twelve. Probation office. Any questions? Page thirteen, I believe we already discussed. And if it's my understanding and the approval of everybody on the court that this court is going to approve for an additional position for the district tax office. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
And just for confirmation, that's what you're asking for, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Number fourteen, Justice of the Peace, Precinct One. Any comments or changes? Justice of the Peace, Precinct Two.
Judge, I'm just thinking right now. Okay, this is what we gave them at a dollar basis, correct?
Correct.
And what's gonna happen now? Same question, that we're going up to thirteen dollars. The other people are gonna get two dollars and they're only getting a dollar twenty-five. That's what I was saying.
A dollar twenty-five, what do you mean?
A dollar fifty, they're getting a raise for a dollar fifty, correct?
Excuse me?
The other people, when they come in...
So then make sure it's up to a dollar fifty.
Up to a dollar fifty.
So if it's up to a dollar fifty, this goes back to the elected officials.
Correct.
All right. So that's what I wanted to ask because I know...
It's at the discretion. And that's what we talked about, Commissioner Drogba, correctly. If I'm wrong, it's up to a dollar fifty. Because every elected official, when they brought us their budget request, there was some elected officials that did not wanna give their employees a dollar fifty. Some brought us a request to give them only fifty cents. And that's their discretion. Because as Commissioner Drogba says, only they know the kind of work that they put out. So it's up to a dollar fifty across every department at the discretion of that elected official. Precinct Two, Justice of the Peace. Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three. Precinct Four, Justice of the Peace. Precinct Four, Justice of the Peace. Constable, Precinct One.
Judge, I got a question on the constables. I'm gonna say constable, because I can't single one out. The law that came into an effect, it says forty-five thousand for all law enforcement that work with prisoners and citations and all that other good stuff that they do. Now, the constables are elected officials, but some of them work and some don't. So, I don't feel right to give them the forty-five thousand, that, 'cause I talked to the, what was the name, the...
Will. Will.
Will, Will, and he said it was up to the Commissioners Court to give it to them. The only concern that he had is that if we gave him, we didn't give him the forty-five thousand, we wouldn't get any money from the state. But some, some, some of them, as you know, I would like to, for you also consider, so that, not giving them the forty-five, but like, uh, Mr. Valdella's been here for eight years, Constable Valdella, and then somebody that just came in is gonna get forty-five thousand. You know, so...
Judge, if I may...
Go ahead.
We understand that some of them have, it's like any elected official, any elected official. We, if, you're dedicated to, and this is not in, in a disrespectful manner what I'm about to say, but you as an elected official, if you wanna work, we don't have no hourly, uh, workday, but we, we are responsible for our constituents for eight hours a day of work. However, there's other elected officials that work and have an, not singularly against anybody, but there's also, it's, it's gonna take effect on everybody. So, if we, if we're gonna do this, uh, on our officers or anybody like that, uh, it's just like us. If I had another job, I would be working the job and still making the salary I'm making. Come in, work at least one hour or two, and then go, go work on my job. So, why should we punish the officials? I mean, the, not punish them, but why should we deny them from what SB twenty-two bill says to compare whoever next here, we're gonna have to really abide with it, because it is a lot. Once we do the budget, we're gonna have to give them the forty-five thousand, regardless how, however, who feels what.
Okay, under SB twenty-two, the county's gonna have to certify that they are doing arrests, citations, and what have you. So, if they're not, if they don't certify, and we still don't know who has to certify that...
The County Judges' Office is going to certify that, and as, as a matter of fact, if I can have all the four constables come forward, please. Constable Galván. As, as you heard, um, Mr. Juan Garmona's position, you heard Mr. Alonso's position, obviously two different positions, and you heard Mr. Pereira, Mr. Pereira, SB twenty-two, the law says, and they're still working on the rules for that, in order for the county to get reimbursed for SB twenty-two, we have to certify, specifically my office, at the County Judges' Office, who have to certify that you four are doing arrests, you're doing stops, you're doing, um, prisoner inmate, uh, transfers. There's several other things that Mr. Pereira apparently has information. My distinct understanding is y'all do that already, don't you? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. And he says he hasn't done a transfer, Mr. Pereira's answering that. So, the question really is, is...
If you cannot certify it and they do their job, I don't have a problem. Then give them forty-five thousand. But, you know, if you know, the... Yes, sir.
So, that would be up to the Sheriff's Office for the prison transfers? That's not really a...
Well, I think Commissioner, Commissioner, we get that information from the sheriffs, obviously, but what Commissioner Garmona's concern and position is, is that there's several constables that have additional jobs aside from being a constable. And my position to that is, is that, because obviously, I proposed the budget, and I proposed for all four of y'all to get the forty-five thousand as per SB twenty-two. You are elected officials. We all are elected officials, and we report to our constituents, to the people that vote us. That's who we have, that's who we have to answer to. And so, I can't answer the question for you, for Mr. Juan Garmona, but what I can say is that, if you have two jobs, if you have two jobs, and there's many people in this world, in the United States, in our town alone, that have to have two jobs for us to survive. I mean, we have to, there's some others on the court that have two jobs. We have to work double, because we gotta put food on the table. What I say to you is, I personally have no issue that you have two jobs. What I have an issue with is if you have two jobs and you don't give it your all to our constituents, 'cause they're the ones that vote you and put you in office. And so, if you prioritize your other job over your elected job, that's something that you have to answer to your constituents when election time comes, as to why that's more important than being a constable. So, for me, my position will remain the same, um, as to what I proposed, but I'm only at one vote, so, I don't know if there's any other comments?
Judge, also on a later note, um, you know, if they're gonna make an arrest, but the jail is full, and I know it's a lame, uh, suggestion, but how can you certify that the arrest wasn't even, or was...
Well, they'll, they'll still make the arrest. Arrest on paper, criminally, legally, it's still an arrest. They still have to go and book them and everything, but they'll just release them after the booking, because there is no more room in the jail.
They do not accept it, we will then release, but we will issue a warrant.
The reason I, I brought this up, because, how have you been a constable, Mr. Arambula? Okay, and you were only at thirty-six, eighteen years, thirty-six thousand. But now you're gonna get paid forty-five thousand, it's not a problem. But this young man just came in, right? Because your papers have been here a long time. Mr. Valdellas have been here a long time, you know, and you all, I know you all, but my concern is, if, if one of them gets our forty-five thousand, and then they, they're working somewhere else, and they get another forty-five thousand, they're gonna be earning more than anybody else here. 'Cause they have to get paid at the other departments too, right, to them? Like, like the city? They have to get forty-five over there too, right? Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, he's, what he's saying, what he's saying is like, for instance, the issue with, is with Constable, is with Constable Castaneda, that he just came in and we're gonna give him forty-five, and he's working as a marshal, and we're gonna take him forty-five, and he's saying that's gonna be ninety, and he's gonna make more than everybody.
SB twenty-two is only for counties, for county sheriffs, yes, sir?
According to the, will, any law enforcement officer, which includes marshals, with city police, and all of that, that's what the will said.
It's only, it's only for, it's only for constables?
And the sheriffs?
Sheriff's Department.
And, and the prosecutors?
No, no, I know, but we're not, we're talking about law enforcement.
It's county, right? It's county, not municipal, it's just county, I think, overall.
Well, that's why I wanna verify, 'cause that's why I asked you to follow up and ask.
But, yeah, but it's county, it's huge.
But I think more of the, more of the issue, and, and that's your issue, and that's your concern, and you have every right to feel that, is that it's forty-five and it's a new position. I just think that there is no requirement in the law that says if you're a first-time official, you have to get paid this much or that much.
That's the only concern I have there, you know, that if you're working as a law enforcement, I don't know, is, is that still, the law's gonna come in, they're gonna go, one, one, one job? But if it's an elected official, then how are we gonna, are we gonna work that out?
Again, again, my position is, if he has two or three jobs...
No, no, I understand that, I understand that. They can have five jobs, of course, I'm concerned. But my concern is, how are we gonna justify it if you're on? We is Commissioners Court. Giving them forty-five thousand, then forty-five thousand.
I know, but we can't, well, I, I don't, I, we can't control how much the city pays him, Commissioner. I don't know, if they pay him a hundred thousand, that's gonna be up to the taxpayers of Garizo Springs, City of Carrizo. All I know is that here, as per SB twenty-two, I propose, and I will take the blame, I will take the heat, I will stand by my position. I propose that they all get forty-five. That is what I say. You know, that's my position.
It's not a matter of taking it, you know, I've taken more heat than you can believe. I, I can stand my ground with anybody. But my point is, that it's still, again, not fair that this gentleman have been here a long time, and then we're gonna pay him forty-five thousand. That's my position. As far as standing my ground, everybody knows how to stand my ground. Whatever I believe, I support. And I don't care if it costs in my election, I don't care, because I stand for what I believe.
And I, and I respect you wholeheartedly for standing your position, because I think that that's what we should do, that's what we're voted for, to stand our position and what we believe is right, and what we believe is fair. And if, and, and I'm not getting mad, if you believe that you don't think he should get the forty-five, your vote is not to give him the forty-five. That's, that's your vote. I, I respect that, and I'm mature enough to accept that, and, and I, I appreciate your frankness about it. You don't have to vote for that. I just, SB twenty-two says forty-five, and in order for us to get SB twenty-two, we have to put it in our budget. And if not, then we don't get it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I just also...
And, and more so because they're elected officials, so you gotta do it right now. If you don't do it right now, you have to wait till next year.
And, and then it's like you said, that I really wouldn't in the increase, but they answer to the constituents. We, we, I don't, I don't, they don't have to answer to me, other than the questions that I might have. But if the constituents want, uh, want to reelect them, so we end it respectfully, and if they don't, then you'll see change.
Correct.
And it's gonna come in like that again the next year, and this is be going on. We wanna protect every law enforcement officer out there, and give them what they deserve. If it's an increase, we're gonna give them that increase, not single out councilmen, not single out charity department, not jailers or anybody else, but give their dues or its really due them, and thank you.
Commissioner, that, we're not singling out anybody. I mean, recall, let the record reflect that I'm not singling them out, I'm not singling out the charity department. I'm just stating my opinion.
I never said that you were singling out somebody. I just said, let's don't single out. I included myself. I included myself. I'm not gonna single out any person out there, Commissioner. I understand that, that's, and you said, our word is our word, and you stand by it.
And I do agree with Commissioner, but we need to prove our constituents that we can do the job, become, particularly do the job. And if they feel that we don't, they will vote us out. Same thing goes for the deputies as well. We're one of the only counties here that handle the city calls and county courts. The walla has city municipal. Same thing goes for April County and other counties. These guys are being in the day out, county and city, having to go all the way to Catarina and back, maybe with three deputies at a time, for the little pay that they have. That's why they can't feel some sort, sometimes of the positions they have right now, because of the pay. They, I mean, it's, I see it, they hurt, that's why I come out in the middle of night, three AM, because they have a deputy in Bigwell's that needs backup. I get out, people back them up, because they're shorthanded in the city. I mean, we need it, we need help, you know, and they deserve it. I mean, so...
When you say shorthanded, we giving the sheriff the opportunity to hire all his twenty-eight or thirty employees that he needs?
I understand, yes.
If he's shorthanded, it's because he believes in, he doesn't...
Sir, I'm, I'm gonna let you know right now, I've had people, hey, why don't you go buy the sheriffs off, and it'll make a lot. You know what? April County's making more than they didn't.
We are gonna correct it.
I understand, no, I understand.
But that thing we're gonna correct with everything, but what you're saying, they're short-staffed. We giving him the green light a long time ago on the jailers and on the deputies. So, if he hasn't hired them, that's his job.
Fully staffed, I'm fully staffed, except for one traffic, but sometimes we're shorthanded, 'cause we gotta take image from park patients, or we have sexual assault victims, we gotta take them to San Antonio.
Right, but you're not shorthanded, you're using them somewhere else, huh?
Yes, but they're shorthanded in town. That's where, if I have three working, one of them goes, and I only have two. And if they're on call, that's where sometimes he'll come in and says, Valdella also gets a lot of calls at his house, they go knock on his door.
I'm a questioning that, I know that for a fact, aside, I hear from the people from Bigwell's, he's doing a good job, that I don't have a problem with any of these constables. The only concern I had was these guys, I mean, these gentlemen have been here a long time, and then we got somebody new that's gonna owe forty-five thousand with just less than a year's experience. That's the only concern I have. Other than that, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't mind them working two jobs, five jobs. That's the only concern I have. You're talking about being fair, and everybody turns the same amount, okay?
Yeah, I've, I've had my license since twenty thirteen.
Well, regardless, but you just got appointed, or you just, right? Am I wrong?
In January, yes.
Right.
But law enforcement, law enforcement is bringing since twenty thirteen.
Right, but I'm not talking about, like I said, you all misunderstand everything I try to say. I'm not talking about your experience. I'm not talking to you. My concern is, this gentleman were here long before, and now you're gonna pump them up. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
All right?
What do you, Commissioner Doogal?
For the public that's here, SB twenty-two is a new law that will take effect January first for all sheriffs departments. They need, the deputies need to be making a minimum of forty-five thousand. Every sheriff in Texas is gonna be making seventy-five thousand, if they haven't been making that, and the constables, forty-five thousand. I understand the frustration, 'cause he's new, or he just started, and reveals he's making more, and he'll be making more, but it's not what we want. That's the law, and we have to go abide it. This is what's gonna hap, this is what's happening, so...
And, and to go off of what she says, in order for us, we could just say, we're not gonna do SB twenty-two. It's not, it's, it's law, but it's not mandated to be imputed upon the Commissioners Court, the counties. If we want to get that additional grant funding, SB twenty-two is a grant essentially coming from the comptroller's office. And if we wanna get that grant, we have to include those minimal amounts, as Commissioner Doogal just said, into our budget. In order for us to get the grant, it has to be in our budget. If it's not in our budget, we cannot get that money. And I put it in our budget, and I put it for the constables, the jailers, and the sheriffs, because in order for us to get that grant, it has to be in our budget.
And this, SB twenty-two is gonna be an indefinite program that's going on in law? Is that like a one-time grant or something like that? It's gonna be, it's indefinite?
Forty-five thousand is, I understand it's not enough. Forty-five thousand for a deputy, any constable, any sheriff department, forty-five thousand is not enough. You guys are risking your lives, so I don't put a number to what you guys should be making, but at least it'll book you guys up. If we are starting, our starting pay for deputies was thirty-eight or forty-two thousand. So, at least forty-five thousand, it's a little bit more, and I, I mean, I applaud you guys for what you do. So, and believe me when I say forty-five thousand is not enough, but this is what we were told, I mean, this is the law, this is the SB twenty-two, it'll take effect January first. So, if you guys weren't making forty-five thousand, you were making thirty-eight, forty? Okay, forty-five thousand you'll be making the coming year, come October first.
Commissioner Orenna.
I just, I just wanted to say that this is actually something that needs to hap, needed to happen to be able to protect our law enforcement, especially in a rural community like the one we live in. Sometimes we're neglected since we're out in the brush code street, but, uh, everybody's out there risking, y'all are risking out there a lot more than some of us are. So, as long as y'all can work together, I understand, sometimes we can get a little bit wrong. But with the sheriff and our country, we're working together, I think we can, we can take care of it really properly. And so, we will.
Thank you, Consul. So we are, um, precinct one.
Just one first.
Yes.
Mr. Pereira, like I said, I have a problem with getting what they, the law requires. But what happens if when they stop, the, but they are giving out grants, like everything else?
They said it was gonna continue for a long time, so.
Right, for a long time, but it doesn't, it's not indefinite, right?
Only the border when it comes to.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be next couple of years, so.
Because this, this is the problem I have, we give them money, they're never gonna take it away. Even if it's ten years from now, it's gonna affect them later on.
And, and again, Commissioner, as I mentioned earlier, I wholeheartedly understand that position. And I think when we cross that bridge, that's when we have to advise our constituents. And I would hope that our law enforcement would understand that when we cross that bridge, times may be hard, and we have to just figure out a way to adapt to those changes. And if those changes means that Sheriff Casaneda, if he's in office, has to cut, make cuts to positions, and I would hope that our constituents can see that. Because I think at the end of the day, again, as we mentioned earlier, we're voted to do what's in the best interest of our community, and, and our constituents, and in our, in our budget. And if we have to cut our budget, then we have to cut our budget to make sure that we promote law and order. I mean, whatever it is that needs to be done, I think at that time we'll do that. But in order for us to get SB twenty-two today, we have to go by what the rules in that grant stipulate.
And just for the record, I would like for the deputies and constables to understand, I'm the first one there at the line to give you what you need, as you all know. But my concerns or my questions, that's why I ask them, to clarify and be satisfied that I asked, and I got the correct answer. So it's nothing personal, like I say, but I like to make things the right way. I prefer to lose an election for doing my job than to keep winning for not doing my job. That's the way I feel. And that's always, the way I was brought up, that if I give my word, I keep it. So I hope you all understand that.
Precinct one, yes.
Do all four constables have the new handheld radio?
Yes, we did.
I know everything's changing, so make sure you all guys have the new one, if not, so we can put it in your budget.
We did, Commissioner, on one of the budgets, which is Commissioner Arambala's. That's why on the Capitol outline for Commissioner Arambala, you'll see that on there. Oh, yeah, when we get to that page. So, precinct one, Constable eighteen, any other questions?
Commissioner, any questions?
Precinct one, Constable one.
Rhode and Bridge or Constable?
Precinct one, Constable. Did I say Rhode and Bridge?
Yeah.
I said Rhode and Bridge?
Earlier you said Rhode and Bridge.
No, I meant to say Constable, I apologize. So, no other questions, approved as on there? Move forward to Constable precinct two, Constable Arambala, Commissioner Holcova, as you can see on equipment, on the vehicle, is that amount reflects that radar that we were talking about. Any questions on number, page nineteen? Page twenty, any questions on page twenty? Constable precinct three. Constable, excuse me, page twenty-one, any questions?
Judge Agamano is getting a new vehicle, right?
Yes, it's for a new vehicle. Page twenty-two. On page twenty-two, as you can see, just to put on the record, we did have that grievance committee, the grievance committee recommended that there be a ten percent increase in the salary for the county attorney, which reflects that number. That is the, the recommendation that I put on there. However, the law specifically states on the government code section one fifty-three point one-one-two that the court can take it as a recommendation and does not necessarily have to approve it. So that is my amount there that I put to follow the recommendation of the grievance. Is there any questions?
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
I know he had asked for two additional full-time employees. Have we heard these from OLS?
OLS? Um, we are supposed to know at the end of the month. And I say that so that our public knows, because I know that we've had, um, public members come in, have their, their, their issues or concerns. But we have an order that we have to follow. And so, again, if it already happened this year, the public hearing next year, you're more than welcome to attend that public hearing. Twenty-eight, page twenty-eight. Any questions or comments on page twenty-eight?
Why, I went down from thirty to twenty-four?
Because it's gonna be in a cranny position.
But it's not at, at that rate?
It's not gonna be at that rate anymore, we're gonna put it back to the new rate. That is, that's again, that, that goes again, Commissioner, to the position of we're not starting at the starting rate, if you go at thirty. I mean, the other, because you're asking for thirty, which is outside of minimum wage, or the minimum base pay that we're.
But again, like, like you say, the work they have and the work they do, the IT departments go hard and everything else, that they come in and they do their job. So I was just wondering, why do we have to pay that? We agree on everybody else trying to get.
I agree with you, and that's why we're putting it on there.
For thirty thousand or forty-four?
The, no, the new amount, it's gonna show whatever the new amount is, Mr. Pereira, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand for the new employee?
Mm-hmm.
The new IT?
We don't have, it's a vacant.
I thought it was, I thought it was filled.
Excuse me?
I thought it was filled.
No, he has a part-time position. It's a part-time position.
He's doing it right now in the part-time. We're gonna, we're gonna see how it works out.
We, we have your payroll notice, it's temporary full-time.
Right.
But full-time is up to forty hours.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
If you can come.
My hearing block is going wild.
That, right now, the position, you hired it at temporary full-time, not, not at part-time.
Temporary full-time, correct, he's working forty hours.
Yes, so you're gonna, so the court is gonna cut his pay for starting in October?
No, no, we're not gonna cut his pay.
For the twenty-four nine sixty, are we gonna pay him?
No, that's not twenty-four nine sixty, because that was with the eleven-dollar commissioner.
That's what I was gonna say, I was like.
If, if you put it at twenty-seven, he's gonna go down, or the individual's gonna go down.
So currently, the individual is at the salary of?
That's correct.
Which is thirty-two seven sixty?
Um, no.
I know, but what I'm saying is that that position was budgeted for thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
So he, so he's paying him fourteen, is what you're saying?
Correct.
You're paying him fourteen dollars now.
Fourteen dollars, yes.
Which is more than what's, yes, so it's gonna get cut, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
So if, so, right now, Commissioner Carmona, just so you understand, it's thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixteen. That one was budgeted for Marco. You're requesting thirty, so you're requesting to cut it.
Fourteen, yeah, it's gonna be only fourteen, even if you will come in, it'll be fourteen.
I understand that, but, but you, you were requesting to cut it from thirty-two to thirty.
Yes, but that's, that's still gonna cover what he's making, that's still gonna cover what he's making.
That's gonna cover what he's gonna make, what he's making now.
Okay, yeah, that, that's what it's gonna be making.
Yes, but now, but now if you're proposing to cut it to twenty-seven, now then he's gonna go down.
Because it was at twenty-four, yeah, but we went up, so.
We're cutting, we're, it's going to be thirty. That's what he requested.
Right, I, right, I understand his request, but then I heard, y'all were talking.
No, I, I said we're fixing that, because we changed the hourly rate.
So, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to do thirty, since it already.
Okay, right, I was making sure it's gonna stay thirty, for the.
You're, you're gonna, yeah, to abstain, you'll go ahead.
Anyway, I'm not, I'm abstaining from voting, but my question is, these IT gentlemen, A, they do a lot, technology nowadays costs a lot, paying them fourteen dollars, twenty dollars is nothing. When everything goes down, the individual goes down, who does one, the person they call and blame is the IT department. When the phone lines don't work, who do they blame? The IT department. When the ACs went out at the arena, who did they blame? The ITs, even though they have nothing to do with the AC, but they were blamed. The first ones they blame is the IT, our computer, our printer doesn't work, what do we call IT? Sheriff's office, computers go down, they call the ITs. And to pay them fourteen, sixteen, seven, I mean, I'm sorry, that's not enough. Everywhere, ITs are making more, and I understand they're here, because they, they enjoy it here. If they, if not, they wouldn't be here for that pay. But we need to consider our IT department, we run because of them. If something goes down, Mary's office doesn't work, my sanitation department doesn't work, payroll doesn't work. So, I mean, we need to make sure that we're paying the correct amount. Or we visit this, because if we're gonna go down, the eighteen-dollar amount, they go down.
Right, and I just wanna make sure this individual doesn't go down, that's why I'm asking this question for.
That's why I asked, because I saw it, and I was like, they're gonna go down.
Okay, well, it is thirty. Because I, I really was gonna pay more if Marco was a fifteen, I thought it would, it would be right if I, if I pay him.
And, but that, again, that's why we have to have these job description positions. Because if we go back to what the original item was said when we first started court, you wanna pay everybody at eleven or twelve, and it's, their job is different. Every person's job is different, and that's why we have to have those things, because they do a different thing, and they get paid a different amount. Our world is IT.
And I'm not sure if our IT, both of them are appoint, are appointed, or it's just one, and the other one's just employee.
Correct.
Yeah, one just, I'm for the other one.
Correct.
Like you always said, okay, we discuss our, our budget, and like the judge, Mr. Mendez, or your, A, okay, like, going back our secretaries, then we need to put our secretaries, elected official secretaries, as executive secretaries, so we can distinguish them and pay what we wanna pay.
That's exactly what Mr. Ortiz has been bringing up.
For the rest, when they see it, okay, their secretaries are gonna be making more than me, okay. This is the reason why, I know before we had the, uh, chief secretaries, that's what we called them, that they had a, because they were the chief secretaries. But for IT, I mean, we need, I mean, our world revolves around IT. Anything technology, every, we're always on our cell phones, making sure to do work, our computers, our printers. But as soon as something goes down, the first one to blame is the IT department. Even if they don't get it correct, or they can't do it right there and then, they're the first ones to blame.
Any other questions, and, any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mendez has also expressed an interest in assisting my office with the ballot evaluation equipment.
Any other questions, comments?
So we're gonna leave it at thirty?
So, we're, we're putting it at the, the thirty that you requested, Commissioner. And also, just for the record, let the record reflect that Commissioner Holcova, I believe, is abstaining from this approval, because her son is, is appointed official IT, so. Any other questions? Page twenty-nine, any questions? Page thirty, any questions? Page thirty-one?
I don't, I don't know what page we're talking about. I, I don't have a book to know what page we're talking about.
Page twenty-nine is county treasurer, you have a question?
Yeah, he wasn't requesting a full-time.
We gave him a full-time.
Right. And, so it's, it's going to thirteen, correct?
Correct.
That was my only concern.
Page thirty? Tax assessor. Page thirty-one? Page thirty-two, sheriff? Page thirty-three?
I was checking if he changed it or.
No.
So if everybody stays the same, would everybody's increased to forty-five thousand?
That's what I did, yes. Thirty-three, county jail?
Judge, can we go back to thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
I had seen, it has no equipment, and I know when I asked the sheriff, when we did the budgeting hearing, if he was aware of his budget, he said it was not done by him, it was done by Mr. Fendosa. So he didn't review it, he didn't know what was on it. On equipment, I know, and the judge knows, when we went to the training, the radios, the handheld radios.
Yes, we, we included a big chunk of the, the equipment is on the OLS grant. Um, I don't, I think there might be a typo here, because Mr. Pereira and I had discussed this morning in regards to getting equipment or the transport vehicle for the jail. So that's on the second page with the equipment. But, but everything on here is reflective of the, the equipment and the needs that I discussed with the sheriff, and that I discussed with Ruth, the chief, reflective on here. For equipment, because the equipment, we're getting it through the OLS grant. And I know, I, I know what your, your remarks gonna be.
I'm gonna say, what if, we don't, if? I'm hoping, I know everybody else is hoping that we do get it, because it's gonna help us a lot, but if we don't, what's gonna happen if we don't?
And, and I discussed this with Mr. Pereira, go ahead.
You can always come back and correct it, or you add it.
Can't, no, no, sir.
Yes, what, what about the American relief?
Judge.
That, that's, that's under my CO, and I had discussed it already.
Oh.
Um, in regards to using that CO, the ARPA CO, for equipment, for the fire station, and equipment for the sheriff's office, through my CO.
Judge, what if we put a dollar amount in equipment, just in case it doesn't go through? It's already there, and if it's thus, we, we're giving him the understanding that you can't use that money if you get the funding. But if you don't, there's no money for your radios or whatever you need, because for equipment, I'm sure they're gonna need something.
The, the reason why that reflects that, again, is because I'm using my CO, my CO. I'm buying it.
What they need is from through your COs.
Through my CO, for the ARPA.
Here, what about your computers and your vehicles?
Computers? I don't think all of the vehicles have, do they?
No, they have laptops in their vehicles.
And, and, that's what I meant, a, a laptop.
But on the office, though, the ones we use with the deputies, those are outdated.
We, we included those, Commissioner Orenna, in the IT budget. As you can recall. As you can recall, the IT, remember, they got a, a big budget on the.
Yeah. That's, so, so that's, it's in their office.
Correct. Any other questions?
Just for the public to understand, I put, I, we, the commissioners and the judges have put, uh, the money for all IT under one department, they wait, we get, uh, if you buy a computer or whatever, Mr. Mendez writes a serial number now and everything else, we get a work order, that way we have proof that you have it.
Yes.
But that's the way it's gonna work from now on.
Mr. Loguaga, do you know how much, roughly, your hospital vehicles?
No.
Roughly is ten thousand dollars or more. That's just one vehicle. And some of them are already given out, because they're all. They're all unpaid.
What about your grants?
You have twenty-five minutes.
Yes, my, my, um, grants and planning actually has been working zealously with our other grants and planning, Selena Rodriguez, we actually, um, I think we're gonna, we got the grant, but we're waiting on some stuff for all new radios, and that one's through C-Jack, um, through mineral grant. So, that grant's coming in as well, um, for the radios and, um, Ms. Carla Ortiz put in for computers and for, um, an additional car, I believe, for the sheriff's office. So we, we are working on trying to get as many grants as we can, obviously, to save the county money. But Selena, I can't thank her enough, Selena Rodriguez, because she has gone above and beyond to try to get grants for the sheriff's office, I think we're like over two million just now, this year, in how many grants she's applied for.
How many vehicles do you have?
I believe that we should have at least thirty, but most of them are over a hundred thousand miles and they're breaking down. Crime missions are where getting repairs are coming on, they're just getting old, maybe replaced, hopefully the OLS can get them. Well, I believe Selena's changing some money around, I gotta hope for two towels or two, uh, explorers, I'm seeing which one we get, maybe get two more vehicles, something I would like to approach also, maybe out of the, uh, forfeiture account, maybe buying another vehicle, at least have an extra one up there.
Thank you, Sheriff. Page thirty-three? From there you'll see Commissioner Loguaga, where it has for the, for the van, the transport van. So with the OLS, we also apply for two transport vans, however, they have to be utilized specifically for OLS purposes. So this is, um, an additional, um, transport van for those, um, transports that are not related to OLS.
Is that the one under the Capitol?
Yes, ma'am. Page thirty-four, DPS? Page thirty-five?
Fire department.
The fire department? No questions? Page thirty-six? No questions? Page thirty-seven, arena? No questions? Page thirty-eight? You want to, page thirty-nine? Any questions?
Parks and Recreation, it will be under who?
That's under my office, Commissioner. And this is for, specifically for the, um, Demet County Sports Complex that we approved last month. Um, I don't foresee any of these, um, amounts being utilized, we budget for them. I'm being advised by our architect that we're looking at about sixteen months to eighteen months before the full completion of the Demet County Sports Complex. So these are here, um, as per our auditor, um, for auditing purposes, because we did get the COs for, or the, the tax note for the, for the complex, we need it included in our, in our budget.
Judge, and maintenance and supervisor, that's just one person or two?
On the maintenance supervisor, that's one person, it, it was, but Mr. Pereira put the initial amount of eighty, I advised him that I thought that was too much, and that's why you see that lower amount.
For the seventy-one thousand?
No, no ma'am, seventy-one thousand is what was budgeted last year from your previous administration, um, for one person, and I.
Went down to thirty thousand?
I went down to thirty thousand, because I just, it, it's one sports complex, and I just think that right now, being financially sound, thirty thousand is something that's reasonable.
On the park manager?
Yes, sir.
Be law enforcement?
It's a law enforcement position.
Forty-five?
Don't qualify.
It doesn't qualify, we, we ask the. Yeah, we, we ask. We ask the comptroller and, because, they, they will have to be a certified peace officer, but they don't qualify because they won't be making traffic subs.
Judge, Judge.
And then the full-time parks, just to clarify, I know that you guys see the, that amount of seventy-four, that's to include three or four positions, Mr., three positions, at the starting pay rate.
But these won't get hired to the, to the complexes, probably till next year?
Correct.
Judge, I think that the eighty thousand that you all were referring to was because there's three lawyers that were under the parks. So that's the full time that, and since you're only gonna have one, that's why it's not a hundred and thirty.
Correct.
Okay, it wasn't because we wanted just to put eighty thousand.
Page forty, Metro?
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
You have more in the building than what I have on my building that's falling apart.
In what?
Here?
In what building?
Maintenance and repair building.
Where are you at, Commissioner?
Page thirty-nine. And if it's gonna be a new building.
Maintenance and repair? At ten thousand?
I have six thousand, and the buildings are falling apart.
Let me see.
I wanna give an update, when I took office, we were gonna build a JP's office and a commissioner's office. It started at two hundred thousand, then we said, no, we'll wait, we did the one at Big Wolves, we said, we'll wait. So we did it again, it was five hundred thousand, we did it again for bids, it was seven thousand, seven hundred thousand. Then, we did it not too long ago, before the previous administrator left, it was one point two million dollars to build a building that was three hundred thousand dollars, back then when I took office. So we haven't built our JP's office yet, we're still hoping it gets done. I know we built other buildings, we're gonna build a sports complex, but our office is still, we're still waiting to get it built. Our office in Asherton, if anybody's gone there, it's, I mean, it's falling apart. Yes, we got the elementary school, the elementary building in Asherton, but that one needs a lot of work. If anybody's been in there, it's, it's really damaged, from inside you can see outside in some of the rooms. I thought it was gonna be better, I said, we'll fix it, we'll get it going, it's taking us a while to get it going. We're still working on the cafeteria, we're almost done with it, something that we can rent, it has an AC. So, it's taking time, but I'm hoping, and I, hoping I'm still here, and we can get our office for the JP done in Asherton and the commissioner's office too. Also, Judge, um, I know we've done with mine, but on the building for Asherton, the Rex and I, I know you were there yesterday, they use it for medical expense, uh, bug racers and all that, yesterday we were there for a medical expense building, it was over a hundred degrees in there. If outside was a hundred and three, in there you could feel it, real hot, it was like a hundred and twelve. We were sweating, it was hot, the elders were there, but we're trying to see if we can put AC inside our recreation centers. I know mine, I would love AC, I'm not sure I'm immune, but that's something that we're also working on. So please be patient with us, and hopefully it'll get done, thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Page forty? This is a question that some, was it you, Commissioner Uranda, somebody asked about the thirty-seven for equipment? Or Commissioner Juan, you asked about the equipment? I don't know what your question, what was your question, for thirty-seven? Yes.
For food?
For Metro.
We need a new tire changer, a new machine.
That's what it was for.
We need a new rotary balance machine for our tires, since that's what they do at Metro. And we knew, we need a new diagnostic computer, it's nine thousand dollars. That's why the thirty-seven thousand were asked, and that's just the rough estimates, I didn't get all the quotes, but I'm sure it'll be more. Because what we do at Metro, the guys do the tire changes, ma- mainly on the sheriff's office, and the balance, it'll, it's a lot cheaper for them to do it there than to go somewhere else and get it done and pay more.
More in our area, you have the capital equipment now, I'm thinking, now, I would just ask, because, uh, all of us got caught, and I, I saw two or three that had it. But, it's understandable what you're saying, that you need.
Commissioner, you could have come to me and asked me, I could have told you what it was for.
I don't, I don't have to ask them, I, this is why I'm here, we ask here that. Because otherwise they're gonna say we're making a forum, and we're all gonna be visiting Baja over there, so.
So that's why the thirty-seven thousand.
I, I know, I remember, but also, uh, also, uh, next time you do say that, ma'am, uh, put it another, uh, agenda item, that way we don't get confused.
Put what on an agenda?
Uh, the thirty-seven thousand equipment or whatever.
I didn't put it on an agenda item, you brought it up this morning.
That's what I'm saying, I, I brought it up because we don't have capital equipment, so what I'm saying is.
Nobody got capital equipment, Commissioner Juan, because when we have the budget workshops, when we had the budget workshops, we all agreed.
To take away the capital.
Exactly, and on here, the thirty-seven?
It's under the capital.
It's under capital equipment, and I didn't know what it was either, but you asked this morning, so, Commissioner, battery?
But what I'm saying is, since we all agree no capital equipment, am I wrong, Pereira? It can be another line item instead of capital equipment. Because we, we, we all agree to it, and, and.
In the road and bridges, in the road and bridges.
The what?
For the road and bridge.
No, that's not what we're saying, we said capital equipment, that's the point.
That's why, that's why, in fact, that's why I asked Mr. Pereira to say quick, because I had capital equipment replaced before the dock for, because that equipment's getting, it's, it's getting old, and it's utilized everything, and when I saw that, that's why I'm asking, because once we make that decision, just like we're going back on our work, we should have put it under another ag- agenda item.
No, because we had it, what do you mean? No, that's why the part, what you all agree on was that as the budget hearing, because that's why the part one has ten thousand dollars.
That's right.
Or the radios.
No, the three thousand is only going to buy out.
Guys, it's just.
Okay, whatever.
Thirty-seven thousand, if you all say no, I'm just gonna vote, if you all say no, I can buy it out of my COs, it's not a problem. It's not a problem, it's just thirty-seven thousand dollars, it's not gonna break us. And I understand we said road and bridge, not Metro, because my sheet was given to everybody during the budget hearing. Everybody knew what it was for.
Commissioner, what I'm gonna question is, if, if we knew or not, I'm questioning is, when we were at the budget, uh, uh, proposed budget, we said all capital equipment money was gonna get erased, correct?
You guys only.
To have to buy that, but I, when you, when I tell you, I don't want this on there, that means we all agree not to put other capital equipment, right? So you could have made another line item to put it under.
You guys could have said that, but just like.
Next time, Mr. Pereira, instead, when they take off, I recommend, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, really. Because I know it's, the thirty-seven thousand is, so there wouldn't be no question, I would have put it under maintenance and repair effect. Because it is part of the equipment that is being utilized there and is going old.
No, we, we have to.
Because Commissioner Loguaga brought it, and she's showing you on her thing, she requested it.
I don't have an issue with the thirty-seven, I'm just saying, maybe you would have just put it on the.
No, because when we thought it, we have to account for it, and in our audit, we have to account for all this as separate, uh, item or assets in the, assets.
Okay, one simple, one simple answer, Juan, when we said, take it out, take all the capital equipment out, we're all gonna buy it from the CO. Okay? So that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, we said take it off, so, he's saying completely error button.
But mine, what we understood was, and this was the intention, the road and bridge.
No, never mind, that's, that's.
On the road and bridge, there is obviously a part that's standing, except recently.
So I kept my equipment from Metro flights under COs, it's not road and bridge?
I mean, you can do it if you want, but basically, that's what they agreed on.
Then, so you, I mean, you guys can take it off, I don't have a problem, I'm doing one vote.
You may remember.
But my equipment, the thirty-seven thousand dollars equipment will be purchased by Commissioner Juan Garbuna's COs.
With all pleasure, ma'am, you can take it out of there.
He's buying my equipment with.
I have helped the sheriff department buy stuff, there's not a problem buying stuff for you.
I think what the thing is, uh, CO, 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 and then, I think what's confusing out there is that, uh, we probably get the, the money for the roads and everything, so that is.
That is why the thirty-seven stayed on there.
Yes, but, I mean, the thirty, I don't have an issue with.
I don't.
There were thousand.
What I'm trying to, it's not, it's not the principle of the money, we have money, he's got money, we all have money, it's not the principle. And we all said, we all agree, not to have any capital equipment, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to say Commissioner Loguaga don't buy it, I'm not trying to say Alonso don't buy it, I'm not trying to say Loguaga, I mean, Uranda, Judge don't buy whatever, all I'm saying is, we make a, see, that's what got us in trouble in the past, we make a decision and we never hold up to it. That's, that's what I gotta say.
And we still don't hold up.
Well, okay, there you go. I'm sorry, uh, ladies and gentlemen, but I get wronged out when I know that I'm trying to make a point that is correct, and then we don't understand each other, and you're up here sometimes, so, that, that's the only reason I'm questioning, we're making agreement, the whole commission court. We made an agreement.
The agreement was road and bridge.
Well, regardless, but we made an agreement, no capital equipment money.
This is not road and bridge, this is much worse.
It's still, it's still the same thing, nobody gets, we said nobody gets capital equipment. That's what I'm trying to say. You can buy it out of my CO, it's fine.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's true, I'm gonna vote that we leave it at capital equipment at thirty-seven.
That's fine, I'm like I said, just so we understand that we make decisions and, and sometimes we don't follow, that's all.
Page forty-two, intergovernmental, any questions?
I got one. The district attorney has been doing a lot of work now with us, he has seen in the, uh, the investigators more often, is that correct, Judge?
Yes, with the name of.
Okay, so I wanna leave his budget the way it was, two hundred and.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Cardona, just to advise the court, uh, the commissioner's court, that we're here on behalf of DA's office, in case there's any questions.
And I'm just making a statement here, and I believe we are living the way it is, because they are sending two people over here now to help our, the sheriff department.
You wanna agree on that also, Judge?
Any other questions? Commissioner Uranda?
Well, Judges, I stated before with all this OLS.
Oh, Judges, I stated before with all this whole activity, I would just say to make cuts were, cuts would not benefit us entirely, but, um, you know, and I, I was gonna have to. I, I know, I know we're talking about all this, Judge, and.
Let me ask you, mister, because I think that's an absolute lie, and when people lie, I, I don't appreciate that.
I approach this.
Yes, you can. Mister Carmona is advising me that your district attorney, Mister Samasane, that if we don't approve the budget as proposed, that you're gonna fire it out of what I want.
We're not firing, get rid of one of the investigators.
Question?
Oh yeah, did we take away the inspector or the supervisor?
The utility department, no, we did not take away the inspector.
The supervisor?
Supervisor.
Because only she, Inspector, is one. This is inspector, then part-time to the time, I mean, permanent to time.
Your inspector is your supervisor?
The inspector, he, he does what, he supervises inspectors.
Mister Hyman, Mister Hyman. Any other question?
Actually, there were, there were two different positions, one was for inspector, which is the one he filled. But he's doing it, you were asking me, he was doing it, yes, he's doing both, but there was two positions, one for inspector and one for supervisor, originally.
Right, but at the old administration, one person did both.
He's good, well, right now.
So that's what I'm saying, so you don't need an inspector, then it's gonna be the old way that we used to do it before.
It's good, I mean, where he, the way he's doing it right now, like you said, he's doing both, he's supervising the crews that are working.
I understand that, but can I mention the evening? No? Okay, the former employee under the judge, Judge Frank Ponce, did both of them, the inspector and the supervisor. That's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
So you don't need, really need another inspector or another supervisor?
No, I don't need another.
Okay, that's what I wanna say.
We'll make, we'll make your work.
Because you, you know how it worked before, that person did everything.
Yeah.
So you, so you're asking yourself that, for a position, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a position.
There's not, there's not the supervisor position, I didn't.
It's not in there.
No, but it's not in there, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Fifty-three, the landfill.
Judge.
Yes.
Next Commissioner's Court, it'll be the agenda to accept the landfill. This year we didn't know, I mean, it wasn't done, so we haven't used any funds in there. I know on the bottom, there's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I didn't get to spend it, because I haven't bought the truck that they need for the landfill and all that. I wanted to see if we can transfer it with this communitar. It hasn't been touched yet. I know we have, I requested a vote, and I've spoken with the fifth report, the fifth and the like twice, that they didn't send all the quotes that we needed for the vehicles, so I didn't put it back in there. And the, the loader hasn't been purchased yet, because there was still not any.
Do we have that on the CO money?
The loader?
For the two hundred and thirty thousand. For the landfill?
It was guaranteed, but under it.
Any other questions on landfill?
I have, I have a question, Commissioner, ninety thousand for landfill operators, is that for two people or one person?
That's what was, but they're before my time, and that's the way it stayed.
Isn't that a little bit, ninety thousand for, but it's for one person?
I know that's not what he's gonna get paid, because we need to check how much the surround, I checked the surrounding areas, and some are missing.
Sir, there are just the numbers to what act, what they're actually supposed to be, how do we have ninety thousand for one person as a landfill operator?
It was approved last, Commissioner.
It was approved, you didn't have an issue last year?
It might have been approved last year, but I'm asking right now.
I know, but that's what the engineer had recommended, that's why we kept it.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, but, but that's why I'm asking if it went for one or two.
It's for one person, ninety thousand is for one person.
That was recommended by the engineer, okay, and that's why we have it in there, if you don't pay less, you pay less, but that's what was recommended by the engineer, because.
And then you have another forty-nine thousand for attendance.
This is what the engineer had recommended. And this, these, we had this recommendation from last year, so we just, we're keeping it this year. But it's, but this is what the engineer had recommended, it's his list.
Anybody gotta get the equivalent?
It can always be changed, that's why you have Commissioner's Court.
I mean, if you wanna drop it, drop it, but the problem was that he's saying that you have to go up to get one. Because I know when Maverick County got there, like you, it was, if it wasn't ninety thousand, it was over ninety thousand. When he first got it.
Maverick County.
No, Maverick County's, Maverick County's not the operator, I suppose the county auditorium is maybe four.
I know, but when they first started, they got somebody who was experienced, and everything, and he was making ninety thousand.
Right now, the current landfill for Maverick County is making fifty.
You would drop it, because you're not paying it that hard now, I mean, that, that was a work of mission for the engineer.
I, I'm sorry, you're saying, it seems like a lot of budgeting, not that you're gonna pay, but it's a lot of budgeted money for one person.
Right, so we all wanna bring it down to it.
I'm just gonna vote, and I'm leaving it at nine, that's the way it was.
Because they can hire somebody else on the map.
Yeah, I mean, whatever salary it is.
So you can hire two people?
No, it's just one, this is just one position, Commissioner Odena.
Hold on, can you leave the supervisor?
No, this is just one position, that's the landfill operator.
And she can't do that when you said, right? Because Commissioner Carmona just said he could hire another person under that.
No, it's one line item for one person.
With a license.
I, I, I'm just, well, both, honestly, at seventy-five thousand, I think it's, it's a good number. It makes more sense if you start looking at it on paper, because you still have another close to fifty thousand to, on the bottom, to add attendance. How many people, okay, give an example, how many people run the landfill here in the city?
Five.
Five? Five people running the landfill? I thought it was the secretary and two operators.
They got the loaders, and then they got the scratchers, and then they got the.
They have no idea what they have to.
And then they got the main supervisor, and then they got the one that's got hold of the license.
Chris, you know, how many people are at the, at the landfill?
We had five, right now, they got positions opening, they did have that one person that was at the license to the main one, the supervisor with Jesse.
I say, leave it at that.
Judge, just for information for the public, I almost complained to myself, but, you know, the money that left door, we do not spend it just because it's there, we put it back into the general fund. So all that money that, that we don't use goes back into the general fund, that's why we have money left to work each year. Because we know we got a obligation for, to the constituents, to save money. So any money that's left over here, we might be bickering and arguing and whatever, but every, every single piece of the leftover on the agenda goes into the general fund. Just so you understand, they wouldn't spend just because we, we got the money here.
Any other comments, fifty-three? Sanitation Department, fifty-four. Any questions, Juan?
You said the new trucks will be under COs.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Fifty-five, Public Facilities. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
To approve the budget as.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
With the corrections.
With corrections, but.
With the corrections.
Who, when you say the three thousand, do they have to have been here a year, or less, or anybody that's already here?
What are you asking?
I suppose the two thousand one hundred, the increase to one fifty. Is that a price to anybody that's been here for the whole year, regardless of when they started, not in September, August?
Are you counting on the thirteen dollar increase now?
No, no, no.
He's talking, he's talking about the up to one dollar and fifty cent increase.
Is that correctly, is the correction, to accept them?
His question is, is the up to one dollar and fifty raise, is that going to apply to individuals that have been here for more than a year, or probationary period, or six months, or, that's what his question is.
Last year, we needed to everybody.
So everybody who's been here for this?
We needed to everybody, even though it was supposed to be for, if you, if you were here less than a year, you weren't getting it. But then, after January first, some of the, some of the elected officials changed their budget and gave them the increase, because it was already given in the budget. So we did it last year, we need to do it the same this year, we need to keep it, so, everybody.
Every year stands on its own, so.
Well, I'm standing by last year, we did it for them.
If you, if that's consent of Commissioner's Court, that's fine, that's, I just need to know that.
That's fine.
Because if not, we're gonna have to go back to the elected official's budget again.
No, no, it's just who, you can make the statement, whoever's been here less than six months doesn't get it, or everybody even through.
I think there should be a probationary period of the ninety days.
Okay, good.
So the probationary period?
Anybody outside?
Ninety days.
Okay.
Because that's one of the, one of the, you had done that with the ninety days.
So after the probationary period of ninety days, that increase is at the discretion of each department head?
So basically, everybody get it?
Not necessarily, it'll be on the, you put it on your budget, and you budget for it, however, they have to take Mister Ortiz a.
Payroll notice.
Payroll notice, so that if Commissioner De Volga wants to, like I said, I, I know we had the, the budget workshops, if you can recall, there was some elected officials that did not want to give their employees a dollar fifty, they wanted to give them fifty cents. So, once this budget is approved, each elected official or department head must bring Mister Ortiz a payroll notice to that effect.
Whatever it is.
Whatever it is up to a dollar fifty, and for, correct, for the new budget. Correct, for this, for this one.
Regardless if they're full-time or part-time?
No.
No, the, the, the up to one dollar fifty increase is for full-time employees.
Only full-time employees are getting.
We would include them last year, and the previous years before.
Yeah, well, right now, they're gonna go for fourteen dollars. They're gonna go for fourteen dollars.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry.
Thirteen, what, if they're already over the thirteen dollars?
Part-time is not over thirteen dollars.
There's part-timers that have been years as part-timers.
They can't.
That one, like, I already.
Oh, but those are.
That's what she's telling us.
There are some secretaries that are part-time, that have been here longer than three years, yes, sir? And we gave them last year a dollar fifty raise.
For, because they were here all longer than a year, or three years?
They weren't part-time, but they're here all year.
So anybody, so what, what do you wanna do with those?
That's what I wanna know, what are we gonna do with part-time, we have to give them something, they've been here.
So what do we all wanna do?
Last year, we gave them the dollar fifty, that's what I'm saying, last year, we went, everybody got the dollar fifty, even the part-timers.
Well, not everybody got it, Commissioner, because there are some, whoever went and turned in their payroll notice. Somebody didn't turn in a payroll notice, they didn't get it.
I always told elected officials when we do budget hearings, for any elected official or anybody that wants to come in, they can come in during the proposed budget. That way they know what was said and what they agree on, because they come and tell us, no, you didn't wanna give me a raise. They told, my boss told me, you didn't wanna give me a dollar fifty raise, it's not up to us, we agree on what your elected official told us. If they say no, they're not worth the other dollar fifty, they, they're worthy of fifty dollars, but then they go out to the office, to their office, and they say, oh, they only said a dollar, they don't say, or, I said a dollar, you're only worth a dollar. Oh, no, they blame it on us, Commissioner's Court, when they, they say the dollar fifty.
Okay, just stop fifty per hour.
Yes.
That's, that's the same part-time.
So we are, I got a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a motion, given the corrections made, Mister Pereda, from Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, any other discussion?
Judge, we, we need, my question is, I had brought it up also earlier, on the CDL drivers. Are they gonna stay flat fourteen, or are there gonna be a bump for their license?
Because right now, they're, they're two dollar increases, they want to know we're gonna increase it, and then a dollar, three dollar increase for the CEO. After the ninety days, they get it out, I mean, it's two dollars, up to two dollars, but first they start with the dollar, and then up to two dollars.
Two, two, three, I agree.
Yeah.
Is that the vote of everybody?
I agree, I agree.
If you don't agree, Commissioner, you don't have to agree.
What is it?
You, you don't have to agree.
Right now, it's two dollars for CEO, that's the extra, not extra, but that's what they can pay, so the, the CEO they have, so we're trying to see if we increase it to three dollars.
The, the only concern I have, I don't have a problem with it, like I always have said, I don't have a problem, but when they get their reimbursements from the county for their CDL license, we're already paying more than the three dollars.
I've been here nine years, nine years, I have never, none of my employees have get, gotten reimbursed for their CEO. I never knew about it, I've never done it, I mean, I know you told me before, but all my CDL drivers have never gotten reimbursed.
Reimbursed for what?
Reimbursed.
For their CEO.
I've been saying it since, I made the motion that we pay them the reimbursement for, for their CDL.
For their license.
Yeah.
But they still, they get the reimbursement, but they're still getting that two dollar increase.
Right.
All these years, all these years.
That's what he's, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, but.
So his position is that we should not give them an increase, because they already get a reimbursement.
I understand, but.
Right, Commissioner? That's what you're saying is.
Go ahead and, and put it on, I mean, like I say, what do you mean no, Pereda?
I understand no, I didn't say no, I said, I don't understand what you're asking.
For what?
I don't understand what you're asking.
He's saying, because Commissioner Alonso Carmona is for that, they get another dollar increase above everybody else, because they have the CDL. Commissioner Juan is saying no, because they already get a reimbursement for having the CDL.
But the, you mean to take the test?
Yeah, when, when, when they get the new license, we can reimburse them.
I know, but how much is the reimbursement?
Ninety, ninety-nine dollars.
I, I don't know how much, at that time, what we were doing, it was sixty dollars for the CDL. I don't have a CDL anymore, so I couldn't tell you.
He's talking about.
I know, that's, that pay them, we pay them two dollars, how many times have I asked if we could increase it, we never have. Why, because you said two dollars, you said amount.
No, but right now is what you're doing, that's what he's saying, setting up.
Okay, go ahead, keep it, I'll, I'll, I'll go along, but what I'm, my point I'm making is, we pay for their reimbursement and the. Ju- just like Commissioner Uranda and Commissioner De Volga, if you get a CDL, I mean, if you get a certificate, you get an extra dollar amount more for that certificate that you're getting, right? Come on, Pereda.
Right, I don't, right.
You, you've been an auditor all this time, and you don't, you don't know?
I think you're mixing.
It, it, yeah, because. For anything that they improve themselves on, they get, they get reimbursed for something, or get a raise for something, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so why is he no?
It's, it's, it's different, okay, he's talking about the reimbursement, when you go out.
It, it's, it's, it's different, okay, he's talking about the reimbursement, when you go out and get your license renewed or renewed. Right. Let's say it's ninety dollars, they turn in a reimbursement and they get their ninety dollars, their one-time ninety-dollar reimbursement. Right. For the one year of CDL. It's two different things, the other one is the two dollars added as a CDL driver or driving for the county. Right, so, but he wants to increase it to a dollar, to three dollars?
Which is fine, which is fine, I don't care.
But the reimbursement and the dollar are two different things.
It's, the, the, the point I'm trying to make is, that other people will get a certification, they automatically get another, not type on another increase, increase.
I know, but you, but those are already stipulating the budget, like the water, if you get the water license, where it's already stipulated, but it's already... He's wanting to increase the CDL, the water is there.
I understand, but I would just make it, I would just make it, that we give that up.
Right.
There's nothing else up.
This one goes up. I'm ready to go.
Is, is it for A and B that's going up a dollar or just A?
There you go again.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
I think, uh, we, we, we really don't have B drivers.
Right.
I don't have B drivers, they're all CDL. And, and I, I haven't hired a, a B driver because it requires for them to drive these big trucks.
Right.
A B, a B driver's not gonna help me out there, I mean, I would hire him if I needed, uh, some small thing, but most of the, everything is probably heavy equipment.
Right.
And that's why, that's why...
Yeah, I, I'm gonna...
That's why I, I would really look for, for a CDL, because of the equipment that they're moving. I don't want them to get a ticket and then be our fault for Class B driving a, a CDL equipment.
It's just making it boring that we got, we got...
No, no, I'm explaining to you.
A, A and a B.
I'm not being disrespectful.
No, 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 I, I just wanna make sure, because right now it's two dollars for A and one dollar for B, and I just wanna make sure we're all on the same day in general.
So essentially it'll be one dollar more for B and another dollar for A.
So both, both will go up a dollar.
Correct.
I misunderstood you, so?
Yes. Yes.
Correct, is this, is that the consensus, Commissioner Duol Gava? Commissioner Juan? Commissioner Juan? Commissioners?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion passes. Three point four, the adoption of the tax rate of, and MNO and INS, entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second by Commissioner Urenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Also to adopt the, on the, um, MNO at point sixteen and the entrance, interest and sinking, excuse me, at point one-two-five, for a total tax of point two-eight-five, entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Eight, uh, point one-six, it's my, it's my, Commissioner Juan, my, my... This thing, I think it's running out of batteries. And, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct Two, Mr. Andres Arambula for the month of August.
I would say good morning, but it's not morning anymore.
Well, briefly, and just for anybody here from the community, um, we're gonna go probably for another thirty, forty minutes or so with this, we're gonna break for recess and then we're gonna be back at three P.M., for anybody that wants to be back in attendance, but I also want to invite you and encourage you guys to be back at three. We are having a prayer, a moment of prayer and remembrance for the nine eleven, we are going to have, um, some refreshments and some finger food, so I welcome and encourage you to be back at three for that prayer, um, for nine eleven, so, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Arambula.
I was just saying, good morning.
Good morning, afternoon. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duol Gava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct Three, Mr. Robert Valderas Rudi Lopez for the month of August twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Duol Gava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Valderas, thank you for assisting my department on diamond H.
Thank you for the traffic control for the past two days.
Yes, for all our events that we've had, I, I commend you and I applaud you for servicing us when we had these nine eleven events. Um, it really does mean a lot to me that we can work together so that we can, you know, do community involvement, so thank you, Constable. All in favor? Thank you so much. Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, Precinct One, Constable Mr. Alfredo Castañeda for the month of August.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, sir, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Yes, uh, last week.
Yeah, what's your, do I get?
Oh, yeah, it's...
Three eight.
It's three point eight, write that in Commissioner's report.
Everybody got a copy?
There, there's a copy. Any questions, Commissioner Duol Gava? Thank you. Three point nine, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report for precinct number four, Mr. Jose Garban.
Motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Duol Gava to table.
Second. Second.
Um, hold on, I'm gonna have to...
Testing, testing, can you hear me?
Motion to table by Commissioner Duol Gava, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point ten, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Victory Ambulance for the month of August twenty-twenty-three.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Eric.
So for the month of August, we had a total of three hundred and thirty-six runs. We had, uh, one cancel call, we had fifty-five emergencies, uh, thirty-eight refusal, fifty-seven transfers, thirty-two helipads, seventeen discharges, ninety-four dialysis runs, ten doctors' appointments, twelve home cares, twenty MBAs, and zero deals.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Mr. United Committee, nine-one-one units, do you have available?
Right now, we, we have, always have the one for the county, but running and operating right now, we have three.
Plus the counties?
Wait, that's including the one, all, all of our units do everything, but there's always one in the county.
So you have a total of three running?
Three running.
And the one that burned, that replaced, right?
Yes, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point eleven, discussion and appropriate action to clarify the Victory Ambulance contract as awarded bid. In this particular item, in this particular item, there is, as you can see, there is some inter-local agreements. There is a contract that was signed by this Commissioner's Court and the previous county judge in regards to payment that was going to be given by the county to the EMS or Victory Ambulance for their services. However, at some point in the budget, last year, or you got us, don't hide it on me, somewhere in the budget, that was not, was approved. The budget was approved for the three hundred thousand and right now, there is no money in that line, line item anymore because the contract reflected that the county would pay three hundred and the city was gonna pay three hundred. However, the city, there's a contract here that was signed that said that the city was gonna pay Dimmitt County a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand. So, with that being said, there is a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that is owed to EMS that has not been accounted for or allocated in the current county budget for Dimmitt County. My distinct understanding in speaking to Mrs. Betis is that there was supposed to be corrections made to the contract that the county, not Mr. Gonzalez, but the county's attorneys, whoever at the time was Mr. Donato Ramos, I believe, um, there were supposed to be some corrections and it was supposed to be put back on the agenda before the budget was approved to reflect that difference in price that Dimmitt County was going to incur, that additional a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. However, that was never done. My office, Mr. Pereda's office at the auditor, has contacted the Ramos, um, law firm and they have advised us that they never received such directive or order. So they never fixed any contract, they never corrected any contract, they never had any information regarding this contract. Therefore, when the budget was approved last year, this Commissioner's Court approved simply for the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, not four hundred and fifty-six thousand. So now we're here today and in that line item, there is no funds unfortunately to continue to pay Victory Ambulance at the amount of the four hundred and fifty-six, because it was only budgeted for three hundred thousand.
The, the bid was actually for six hundred thousand.
Right, but the contract was six hundred thousand, but we couldn't find those names in the city. They were supposed to come back, go back to the city and get three hundred thousand dollars, and we were gonna pay three hundred thousand dollars, that's why I stated we're gonna pay. I know that that's what the city had a hundred forty-four, but we didn't know that, they were supposed to get, they were supposed to go back and get three hundred dollars.
Who's, they were supposed to go back? Victory Ambulance?
No, county judges' office.
Okay, but the county judges' office prior to my administration did not do that and you know that.
Right.
Because we already talked to the attorneys.
I know.
And they said that they never did that.
Right, so they, yeah, that never, that happened, but it's supposed to be three hundred thousand dollars for us, so going forward, it should be three hundred thousand dollars for us, three hundred thousand.
We're not talking about going forward, we're talking about right now, because they have provided a service to the county and we don't have the money to pay them.
Right.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Harter, the agreement was for three hundred thousand dollars, the city was supposed to pay half, and the contract with them was they're gonna pay us because we were gonna pay ahead of time. It was not for three hundred thousand, a hundred forty-four, so they're supposed to reimburse us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the three hundred that we paid. The agreement was entered into because the city cannot afford to pay, so we agreed to pay upfront and the city was gonna reimburse us. So they owe us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then we owe them three hundred thousand dollars. So the total agreement was for three hundred thousand, not for three hundred thousand.
So is the agreement is three hundred thousand dollars, it's not three hundred, three hundred?
No, that's the, the, inter-local...
We agreed for six hundred thousand.
And that's the agreement that was accepted.
For two years, for...
So, so for two years, it's six hundred thousand, three hundred one year, three hundred another year?
No, no, it's supposed to be three hundred, uh, for, for us, for them, but three hundred from the city to us, so we ended up paying only three hundred thousand.
That's not what Ms. Betis is saying.
Our bid is for six hundred, which is thirty thousand a month.
Right.
And our contract is with the county, not the city. You guys have an agreement with the city, it's always been that.
Because when we, when we came up here, the, I think, we had, we had, they had discussed that the county was going to pay us and they were gonna receive the, the reimbursement from the city, so the county was covering the entire cost.
Yes.
Correct? The county was covering the entire cost, which was the whole Greek, the, the amount of Greek...
But that was, that was in the budget, is what I'm saying, it was never approved at that...
That's where we got the word of the bid.
Exactly, it was not approved that way, so that's why there's no money in that line item, because it was not... I understand what you're saying and I understand what the agreement that you had, but what I'm saying is that, when that budget was approved last year, it was not approved at six hundred thousand, it was approved at three hundred thousand.
Because that's our portion.
It was approved at two hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Exactly.
Twenty-four thousand, five hundred, um...
Yeah, I don't...
On three hundred thousand.
Exactly.
It's supposed to be three hundred thousand, okay?
Okay, Mr. Pereda, it's supposed to and is, is two different things, it is not.
I know, but three hundred thousand was all we have because the rest of it comes from the city, so we don't expense it in ours, we set it as a receivable, that's why it's only three hundred thousand. I understand the difference right now, but the city is saying, the problem is that the city is saying they're only gonna pay a hundred forty-four thousand, right?
Because that's what's in their interlocal agreement that was done before our bid was even accepted.
That's what the problem is right now, that they're coming back.
We can't pay more.
We can't.
We have to go by our contract, but by what we approved in Commissioner's court in the meeting, and the minute state is three hundred thousand, us and one forty-four, the, the city. If the city's not paying, that is their thing, we need to...
Excuse me, according to the city, they gave me a printout where they're paying up to date a hundred...
They are paid up to date.
No, they already paid the hundred forty-four thousand, but you're all saying that it's supposed to be three hundred thousand.
Right.
So they haven't paid, I mean, ours, in our minute, say it's two hundred ninety-four thousand for us. It doesn't...
Where these minutes will be here, and then you approved our, the six hundred thousand.
No, what the bid as presented...
Or the award as presented for six hundred. And these are...
Honestly, the, the bid was for three hundred thousand for us and then the three hundred thousand.
Right. No, bid was for six hundred thousand. So what, how can we correct it, Mr. Pereira?
So, what do you all wanna do? Supposed to be, it's supposed to be three hundred thousand dollars for the city, three hundred thousand dollars for us, that's the way.
We correct it.
To correct it?
Yeah, so they can pay us the money.
We need to go back to the city.
But the city, the city has to give us, they're, because the city signed a contract with us for a hundred and forty-four thousand. We've called the city already. That's what their, their, the signature, you see right here, that they signed was for a hundred and forty-four thousand, so.
The contracts will never have to.
Correct.
Correctly from.
Yes.
Six hundred thousand for two years, right? So that six hundred thousand is per year?
Per year.
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand for one year.
Per year, per year, for two years.
The contract stays for two years.
The way, the way, the way that, the way you're saying, the way you need to say it is confusing. It's six hundred thousand a year, six hundred thousand next year, that's one point two million for two years. That is your position, correct, Ms. Betis?
Yeah.
And the, what's on here, we don't have it budgeted like that, Commissioner, we have it the way you're saying. The way it was budgeted was for two hundred and ninety-four thousand for this year, two hundred and ninety-four thousand for next year, for a total of six hundred thousand. So that's why we're putting on tariff occasion because Ms. Betis is saying that that was not what the bid was, the bid was six hundred thousand per year, correct?
Correct.
So that's one point two million.
But we did.
And what would be, it was supposed to be six hundred thousand from Dimmitt County? Six, you're saying one point two million from Dimmitt County?
It was six hundred thousand total per year, right?
The city.
And then the county, the county was covering the entire cost, and the county was supposed to be reimbursed by the city, their portion of the three hundred thousand. So we get three hundred thousand from the city and three hundred thousand from the county. Well, that, well, that's what the inter, interlocal agreement was supposed to state. That's what was discussed here, is that the county would cover the cost and that they would get reimbursed, they would go back and get the reimbursement from the city.
And that's not what is on our budget.
Mr. Garcia, you've always been real good with the minutes. Do you have that where it was stated at six hundred thousand?
Well, I don't have it, but I will have it.
But she's saying, okay, what she's saying, she's correct. The six hundred thousand dollars is the bid that was given to us, and that's what we're paying on a yearly basis, but three hundred thousand is only for us, three hundred is for the city.
Correct. And we don't have the three hundred from the city anymore, so that's why they don't have enough money.
That's what the problem is.
That's the problem.
In the past, it's been okay. That's something that you gotta correct with the city because of the past, this is the one.
So right now, essentially, we don't have the money to pay Ms. Betis the difference that is owed, which is a hundred and fifty-six thousand. We don't have that, we don't have that money because we didn't budget for that.
I understand that, but the reason we don't have it because the city hasn't reimbursed.
No, they already reimbursed, Ms. Commissioner. Commissioner.
Your contracts will never update, Commissioner.
Commissioner, right here, on here, because they never received the new contract. And we called, we called Mr. Ramos's office, he was, said he was never advised that a new contract needed to be corrected. So the contract that the city signed, and it's right here, that's signed by all commissioners and the previous judge, Mr. Puente and Melissa Guerra, were, was to reflect a hundred and forty-four thousand. What they're saying, what Mr. Pereira is saying, what I'm saying was that it should've sent three hundred thousand. But this contract never got sent to be corrected to the attorney's office. So then it came back to Commissioner's Court and it got approved at a hundred and forty-four thousand. And on the budget, it got approved with the a hundred and forty-four thousand. So now the city is saying that they're up to par in compliance, because they are, because that's what this last contract says. So all Ms. Betis is saying is that she, she wants it to be the six hundred thousand. And I've been advised with Ms. Betis, I, I spoke to you, and I told her that I was trying to find a resolution to try to correct it, but as of right now, we could not pay her what she thought was, she was gonna get paid because we don't have that budgeted in our line item, we've already ran out of money for that amount. Because the contract should be, what the city should say, three hundred thousand. And we called the city, Mr. Pereira and I, and they said, we're up to date. So we wanted to make sure. We checked and they are up to date, they've paid, they've paid the twenty-five thousand, one forty-four every month that is owed, and they've zeroed out. So what we're here today is how do we find a resolution because it was already approved on the budgets, we can't make a budget amendment, we're, it's too late already to amend the budget to reflect that, so how do we make Ms. Betis whole?
Right now, we can't do a budget amendment for this year. That would be, well, we can still do a budget amendment.
And, and what we need to do is we need to go in negotiations with the city to fix that contract, because if not, it's, we're gonna be in the same boat.
Let me ask you a quick question. Is the contract two years or is it just that we can go from year to year?
No, it's a two-year contract.
What the city is.
Two-year contract.
No, I understand, but it wasn't the right way to say it. Do we have a certain amount of days to cancel the contract with them? Or do we have to honor it since the mistake was done?
With the who?
With who?
With the city. Because what I'm asking is, they always, in next year, they're gonna try to pay the same thing, but can we, uh, what's the word?
Terminate.
Terminate?
Terminate, yeah. We'll terminate the contract with them so we can correct it and lose just this one time, not lose twice.
Well, no, you need to go back right now and start negotiating. You can do it right now.
I, we can go right now, what do you mean we can go right now?
We can contact right now to the city, talk to the city, negotiate with the city.
But if they say no, that's what I'm trying to say, if they say no, they're not gonna honor that three hundred thousand, that they're just gonna pay a hundred and forty-four, can we just give service to the hundred and forty-four and quit?
Well, they're not gonna provide a service to the city of Corizo, which is their constituents.
But they, they put it up on the city, it's their, it's our mistake, but it's their problem. That's the way I see it.
Put in the paper.
Huh?
Put it in the paper.
Yeah, put it in the paper that we're trying to help them out, we've been helping them up with everything, so why can't they just help us out with this one? And they don't wanna do it, it's over here. Exactly, that's what I'm saying, we've been helping them with everything. We've been building backwards and they can't afford a hundred and fifty thousand to finish out the, whatever it is?
I feel that that's the problem everywhere with us because they see the county as money, so everybody takes advantage of us. And we say yes, we don't like to say no, but there's mindset, we need to say no.
Say no?
And if it's not our, I mean, and it's our mess up or screw up, or they, whatever they say, previous administrator and the, these commissioners, they're messed up again, hey, I take the blame, if it was our fault, I'll take the blame, I don't have a problem. But our thing is that we didn't put it out there that they don't wanna pay, that's what they're doing.
That's what I'm saying.
Everybody's getting used to that, we, we, the county, the county takes a lot of the money.
You need to turn it, turn it figure out what we can get so we can break that, terminate that contract and go forward.
The reason we're willing to, and we're trying to help also, be, so they won't have a problem getting the money from the city, we agreed to help out that way, that we pay that fund that we're gonna have.
That's what I'm saying.
If you look at all the contracts, we always have a way out, I always put a way out in the contract. So if you look at the contract, there's probably a way to get out, that's what it was. But, and then, then we'll deal directly with them, then we pay our part and let the city worry about this.
Yeah, but until we, uh.
Mr. Pereira, I've got a motion that we do a budget amendment so that we can be able to pay EMS the proper amount and author, after the court authorize me to discuss with the county legal counsel moving forward for the next contract with the city in regards to EMS. Does that have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
For the amount needed to finish the year.
For the, for the remainder of this fiscal year.
What is, what is the amount ready for the rest of the year?
That's what we, that's why we're.
We're, we're gonna look at that right now.
Because I can tell, we owe seventy-five thousand for this fiscal year, is that what this is gonna be for?
The remainder amount that's due for this fiscal year is the amount that we're going to do the budget amendment for.
Is that what we owe, like five thousand?
It's for the month of.
It will be our, our portion.
Our portion.
Not just the hundred forty-four thousand, I suppose. So we're looking like a budget amendment, a hundred forty-four thousand, more or less.
So they're going to be two eighty-eight in this year's budget?
No, no. The three hundred thousand dollars that we're paying in total, since the city's not paying, that's one, we don't put the city's portion in there, but in this case, we're gonna have.
We're gonna have to put the city's portion in there because we don't, we didn't budget for that amount, and we're not gonna get that amount.
Right, so just to make sure we're all clear, the county is gonna finish the six hundred grand for Victory Ambulance.
Correct?
Correct.
But you don't put six hundred thousand?
Right, 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 you just put the three.
Yes, so how would we put it?
So come October first then, or do we need to go negotiate with the city since this county is only gonna have the three hundred?
Say that again, Ms. Betis.
So on the new budget, the doctors adopted y'all, only put three hundred thousand for EMS. So for the other portion, do we need to go negotiate with the city, or what is it that we need to do?
Correct. Because that's, that was what was budgeted for, based on the contract that the county has with you, is that the county's gonna pay three hundred and the city's gonna pay three hundred. And the contract that we had with the county and the city was that we were going to pay upfront their portion to assist them.
But I thought in the old contract, like, even in the old contract, when, when it said that we had, it was two hundred eighty-eight thousand, that's why it was a hundred and forty-four thousand. It would say, it said then that the county was covering the cost and they were giving reimbursement to the city.
Correct, that's the contract that.
So we bid this year for six hundred thousand. So it's not gonna be a six hundred thousand, it's only gonna be the three hundred thousand from the county.
From three hundred from the county, and then the other three hundred has to come from the city. And that's what Commissioner De Vucava is saying, that we, we were doing them a favor, doing this, their, the city, the previous administration was here, was doing a service to the city by saying, we're gonna eat up the upfront cost and pay for everything, so then you guys reimburse us. You, you understand what I'm saying?
So what would be the city, the three hundred thousand from the county?
From the county, correct. And we're gonna go into negotiations with the city regarding no longer having that contract with them where we pay upfront.
So they would be responsible for the.
They would be responsible.
Paying a hundred thousand.
Correct.
Is that, is that what?
So, so this fiscal year, we're gonna, we're gonna finish up the six hundred thousand, and next fiscal year, we're only paying the three hundred, correct?
Correct.
But remember, May twenty, May?
Ends in May twenty-fourth, yes.
And so we have to come back and do the bid again.
So we're gonna have to maybe do it next year?
No, the, the agreement with the city ends May twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay.
The contract is for two fiscal years, correct?
Yes, their, their contract is for two.
For this year and next year?
Fiscal year, yes.
Correct. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Whatever is the outcome between us and the city, or Victory and the city, we need to put it out in the paper. The constituents need to be aware of what's going on. They keep blaming us over what happens and what doesn't happen, they need to know. I know a lot of people can't come to Commissioner's Court because they, they work, but we need to let them know what's going on. We help as much as we can, anybody that needs our help, we help our, of its local businesses, our nonprofit organizations as much as we can with whatever we can, but it's kind of we let them know what's going on instead of people assuming what's going on here. They need to know the facts, so we need to put it in the paper, the best way to do it, put it in the paper or let, let them know in Commissioner's Court else.
Three point twelve, discussion and appropriate action, approval of interlocal agreement between the Dimmitt County and the city of Corizo law enforcement.
Where does it end?
Mr. Pereira, has the city been paying?
Yes.
They're up to date, paying for the law enforcement?
No, they don't owe some money, but it's, but they're paying, because they paid it, they've been paying the current plus a hundred thousand.
No, they, they haven't paid anything for this fiscal year.
This year, they haven't paid nothing.
For this fiscal year, they haven't paid nothing. Because there was no contract for this fiscal year for law.
There was no law enforcement contract.
Because there is no contract this year.
The, the, if you see it on, on, on this three point one-two, Commissioner Carmona on here, it's from October first of, September eleven twenty-three through October first of twenty twenty-three because there was no contract last year. It was never approved, we looked through the minutes, correct, Oscar?
Yes.
We went through all the minutes and last year, a contract was never approved by this Commissioner's Court. There was never a contract, we, we went to the city, we looked through all the minutes with Mr. Garcia from the years before, and there was no contract for the city of Corizo, and that is why they have not been paying us. That might, understanding?
And there is no renewal clause.
There is no renewal clause.
But thanks to our sheriff department, we're still nice enough to do the services even though we're not getting paid for them.
So today, the contract, the interlocal agreement that you have here is in fact that for us to have them pay the amount of the three hundred fifty thousand and four installments, and then the a hundred thousand that will go to the outstanding debt that they have.
And will they get a copy and make sure, because I don't want them to come back and say we never got a contract?
Well, it has to be signed by the mayor and the city manager. So this contract is gonna be signed by my office or by my, with my signature, Mr. Garcia's signature, Sheriff Castaneda's signature, and it also has to be approved by the mayor and the city manager. And then we'll bring it back here to adopt it. That's the document that's you see in front of you in the notebook, Commissioner De Vucava.
And that's just to correct this fiscal year?
It's to correct the, moving forward, that's what this contract says it was sent to us.
So it's moving to this fiscal year and then next?
No. No, because it says from September eleven twenty-three for next year. It's not to correct, they, they didn't pay us.
They just got all the services for.
They got the services for.
They left the services for free all the, all year?
All year, for all year.
And of course, they're not gonna come back, they're, they weren't gonna come and tell us we don't have a contract. They didn't have a contract, they're never gonna pay, so to them, it was quite a lot.
Is there a motion to approve this contract? I just got it today.
Take it.
I'll entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, second by Commissioner De Vucava. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any opposition? Motion carries. I'm gonna recess, Mr. Garcia. We're gonna take a hour lunch break to come back at to come back at three P M., Mr. Garcia. I'll entertain a motion to recess. Motion by Commissioner Alonso, second motion carries. Three point one-three, discussion and appropriate action to give authorization to Commissioner Juan Carmona to execute the purchase and signatures of the Middle Rio Grand Development Council building. Um, this item was put on the agenda typically and normally the county judge is the individual that will um, sign the contracts and purchases for matters in the county. However, after thorough investigation, I um, had information that there would maybe potentially be some questioning or conflict of interest, and I am going to advise the court that I'm going to abstain and not vote, or I'm requesting that I not be the person or I will not be the person to sign the documents regarding the purchasing of the Middle Rio Grand Building. Therefore, as the senior most commissioner in this Commissioner's Court, my advice was to this court and my advice to Commissioner Juan Carmona is that he sign the documents executing the purchase, final purchase and deeds of the Middle Rio Grand Building.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Do you have a question? Did we were verified or was it verified with the previous with the vendor and the issues?
Yeah, I I I called and uh, they told me, can I?
What's the one vendor?
Well, not the vendor, the gentleman that's selling it.
So the the previous, the individual that's selling the the real estate agent who is selling the property or is doing the transactional work for the county use he advises that he was Mr. Judge Frank Ponce's personal real estate agent. And because of that reason, I'm gonna abstain because I don't want the community to think that I am having some kind of, giving some kind of kickback or something to this individual because he is my husband's father. So because of that, um, I am not going to sign on any document regarding that purchase.
But my question is, was it before we purchased the building or was it afterwards that he became the previous, the the former judge's real estate agent? That's my question.
When when Mr. Matthew, I can't believe, I can't remember his last name, contacted our office, he advised Ms. Alvarado that he was Mr. Ponce's real estate agent on a personal level, but he did not indicate if it was before or after. So for me, the decision I made regardless if it was before or after, I understand where you're coming from because of the vote you made before.
Well, I'm just asking because they were supposed to look into it before we brought it back to the Commissioner's Court and asked.
Well, we put, we we didn't completely, Commissioner Juan asked for it to be put on the agenda and and I and we put it on the agenda at his request. We did not completely um, get that answer from the individual. I can call him back and ask him for him to tell us that. All he told us was that he does work on other personal transactions with the previous county judge.
And.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When I talked to the attorney that's representing us on the purchase, he told me there was no conflict. So I took his word for it, cause he's an attorney. He said that the only conflict might come because Ms. Judge Ponce is the husband of his son. That was the only conflict that he saw. Other than that, there was no conflict whatsoever.
So there's no wrongdoing, is there?
No. According to them, no. And I'm pretty sure he he investigated for it.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I would recommend you get it in writing if we appoint this.
Okay. I don't have a problem, like I say.
Oh, no, no, no. I just I didn't put money in the attorney's, I said he said.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to table it. And I'll have Mr. Munoz.
Munoz.
I'll have Mr. Munoz do a thorough investigation and give us a document on paper.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion
To move.
to table and Commissioner Alonso and Urenda, are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Both of you are withdrawing your motion and you're gonna motion to table? And Commissioner Urenda to table. Second by Urenda, any other discussion?
Um, we need just to let the, I'm sorry, the people know that uh, NHS, that we're still stalling on questions to bear with us till we get it clarified. I told them that we've been ready to sign since three months ago, I was still going ahead. So that's my only thing to, there are no.
To Mr. Estrada? To Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
One opposition, Mr. Juan Carmona. Motion carries. Three point fourteen, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from the Dimon County Golf Course for the month of July and August twenty twenty-three. Good afternoon.
Uh, for the month of July, we have um, twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars uh, submitted. And then for August, we have fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty-one sixty-seven. We have no rental money coming in in August for the clubhouse.
Ms. Hyman, can I ask a question?
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
The tour revenue that came in on July, those twenty-one thousand dollars?
Yes, it was twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty-six.
That's what came in?
Yes.
How much money did it go out?
I'd have to go back and run the monthly report of that. Please see. You want for the month of July?
Um, your reports, let us know how much you were spending and how much is committed.
Okay.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to.
Pause on commission. Commissioner.
To table? You can re- you can recall it if you want.
Judge, for April, for August, it's the dollar months are top.
On the other reports, Commissioner Urenda or Ms. Hyman, if you can just for future reference, if we can make sure we get a perhaps a compacted um, copy so that, cause it looks like the numbers are cut off and it looks like a zero, right, zeroed out?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And for the people that saw me talking to the judge, it just, I was thinking out loud that maybe they should have tabled it instead of going forward, but we were into that issue.
Three point, I'm gonna recall three fifteen and three seventeen. Three point one-eight, discussion and appropriate action to purchase eight complete sets of structural structural turnout gear, coats, pants, boots, helmets, accessories for the Dimon County Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioner. As this item does say, um, we want to try to get eight complete sets of structural turnout gear. This will be coming out of the money that was allocated from Chief Carmona for remaining from uh, from Commissioner, I'm sorry, from Commissioner Carmona for remaining from the from the truck. So there is money there that'll that'll pay for the gear. Uh, as you can see on the uh, I went ahead and I placed a quote for you guys, so it's gonna come out to a total of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifteen.
And you said this is out of the CEO?
Yes.
We had a note, I I would give it a very constant rate, but five hundred thousand, so we're, so that we would be pretty close to closing.
Other questions?
Do you have the copy of the quotes?
I only see the one quote.
Yes, sir. The the quote from MES, this is, they're the, they're the only ones that we we purchased from. They're the only, right now, we're looking in uh, with the other companies and there's gonna be a year or two, year and a half wait from the other companies.
But did you, you didn't even write it?
I'm sorry, no?
Did they even write it?
No, ma'am.
The quote that you got from MES?
I, it's right here.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's a.
They're the only one that had the the suits that were available at the boat.
You're asking for the three quotes, Commissioner?
But it's not that I'm asking if that's what we need to do, cause it's over two thousand dollars.
Oh, he he.
No, but you're you're asking about where it's at, correct?
Where's the where's the quotes?
It's under.
For all three?
For what, all three? There's only one company that's making the gear right now.
I know, but on the sheet, we usually put, on the quote, on the three, we usually put, they did not give us a quote or they're not.
You wanna table it, go get it, uh, go get it, uh.
I'll entertain a motion to table.
Mr. President, I don't see, but I don't see where you see it, Mr. Urenda.
No, I was looking at the.
I'll entertain a motion to table. Motion by Commissioner Luca, second. Second by Commissioner Carmona, Juan Carmona, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one-nine, discussion and appropriate action approval for emergency repair on fire station doors one through six due to freight and breaking lifting cables. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Valery Luca. Any discussion?
Mr. Carmona, is this to repair the sliding doors?
Yeah, the big doors. The wires were already broken.
So these gentlemen can fix those doors?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is we're having issues at the red center. It's just the same doors, so let's see if they're the ones that we can get.
No, they they are.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Torres. Three point one-five, discussion and appropriate action reimbursement of Dimon County Road and Arena Conference Center rental fee for the Chapman family. Did you? I thought so too. Um, we had a motion um, on the on the floor for it. Then we went into discussion and uh, Mr. Ortiz advised us that no vote was ever taken, so we put it back on the agenda to take a formal vote. You did?
You made, you made the motion, I seconded it, and then you're watching the video, we were entered into discussion, and then the process of the actual voting, never to, like, just make the motion.
And I think there also was gonna be questions, who the check was gonna be made?
Well, there was, there was clarification. We got that clarification and the clarification was that the check was gonna be be made out to the individual that submitted the deposit, which was Mr. Yes, correct, Mr. Chapman. So I'm gonna, Commissioner Luca, you're gonna motion it, and Commissioner Urenda, second? Any this other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point sixteen, discussion and appropriate action approval for Commissioner Precinct one Jose Urenda to attend the twenty twenty-three Legal Forum Excellence Award on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Luca, second. Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Three point one-seven, discussion and appropriate action to purchase an eighty gallon, seven point five horsepower air compressor for precinct two.
Judge, I'm gonna go with the Ingrisol. The forty-two the four thousand two hundred and ninety-nine uh, little price. And it'll be perfect. Sorry, getting put on there, but it'll be perfect here. It makes out of parts.
You're asking for it to, you're asking for the court to approve the four thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollar one?
Yes, ma'am. Cause one is six thousand and the other.
And the other one's three thousand.
But again, I'm not familiar with those other brands, so I know Ingrisol is is a good company. Yes, we can get it also here locally instead of going somewhere else to go take it, make it back.
Any questions?
Motion to.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Luca. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point twenty, discussion and appropriate action to change the requirement of getting quotes from five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, precinct three and six.
Judge, I'm pretty questioned for all of us, cause actually when we go up by a part, now it's not, you know, fifty or sixty dollars. There's four hundred, fifteen hundred, sometimes up to eighteen hundred dollars just for one part, that we need for a lot of big jobs. And if we don't be getting quotes all the time, we don't fall behind, so I I I can understand them trying to figure out if we're doing the right thing or not. We're out there, we're the ones that know, so that's the reason I'm asking.
Any questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Valery Luca. Any discussion? So just to clarify, because I think it was typed incorrectly, you're asking for for it to go from five hundred to two thousand?
Just right now, a while ago, we're in the stuff.
We're still in discussion, I haven't asked for a vote yet.
Just a while ago, when my, then when you, one of the county droughts broke down the river and we had to get a part. And they just made it go for dollars and, oh, no, we need to go get the money, just get it. And it was over for four hundred dollars or something. And I'm gonna have to ask Perea.
For our emergency.
It's funny why I bought it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point twenty-one, discussion and appropriate action approval to rescind the motion entered in Commissioner's Court on seven twenty-four twenty-three to purchase a twenty twenty-three Toyota pickup for precinct three and six.
Judge, there was a discussion we had, uh, so instead of going to the byboard, go get it, the votes, and I have provided a vote for everybody to all to see them. I think Mr. Pereira mentioned that I had mentioned byboard, I don't remember, but probably so. So that's the reason I'm clarifying. Clarifying my mistake.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Luca. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point twenty-two, motion to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Toyota pickup with quotes for precinct three and six. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, motion to ratify the action taken on executed contracts for the twenty twenty-three Toyota pickup for precinct three and six.
Judge, is it just to protect you and us that we're gonna leave the, the whole contract, the design, that we went to sign everything all over again, you know what I had to get you, so it's just to, okay?
Any questions? I'll entertain. To entertain a motion?
Motion.
What was that motion?
No, no, I, I was saying, is it answer me, say, no?
No, he's asking for it to be ratified, so it's an action item. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lugo Cava, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, approval for County Clerk Mario Garcia to attend the County and District Clerks Association Texas Eight Region Fall Conference in Corpus Christi. Excuse me. Motion by Commissioner Juan Calmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Valerie Lugo Cava, any discussion?
Discussion, Judge.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is a trend that's gonna be developing among hotels. This particular hotel is telling us that we cannot pay with cash, only with a check. I'd really rather destroy this, and, um, I don't know how this can be.
Is cash still there?
No.
That's what happened over here in the Fairmont?
With us, they didn't take money.
They didn't take your what?
The cash, I had to use my card.
I, that's, I think that's how we've been doing it though, right, with the card? Yeah, we had to pay with the card.
No, but on the cash, on the cash, they, um, we burned it there, now they're getting to where they don't.
Yeah, they don't, they're not accepting cash.
At the Fairmont?
She paid cash at the Fairmont, it's 'cause she's prettier than you.
And taller?
And taller. I, I, I know that the conferences we've gone to, we've had to pay by card.
Judge, Commissioner, I was just wondering, is it an acceptable practice to, like, make appeal for the visa? If somebody doesn't feel comfortable leaving their personal card to rent the hotel, can they get the county, make appeal for the county's visa to reserve the room? And then the money from, like, the travel check would just go to paying the county credit card?
I think that's a discussion we need to have as per policy, because the policy right now says it's just one credit card. I know other counties have, their commissioners each have a credit card, um, and then we do it on the claim docket, but the policy here, Ms. Ortiz, has been that it's one credit card and it gets checked out. So, it's, I think something that can be up for discuss, discuss, discussion, excuse me, for future reference, um, on our policy and how we administer and how we utilize a credit card. Any further discussion for that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point twenty-five, discussion and appropriate action, approval of interlocal agreement on joint election with Carrizo Springs CISD on the bond election. The Carrizo Springs School District is anticipating on having a bond vote. A request to some items that they are asking for. So we had to, Mr. Garcia and I needed to put this item on here to allow Mr. Garcia, um, to be able to administer the voting process, election process with, um, the Carrizo Springs School District. I'm trying to, here it is. So essentially, um, authorizing the signature of myself and the commissioners to have that agreement that the county would, um, operate and, um, excuse me, do the, uh, election for that bond. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, any other discussion?
Just to add, just that, uh, County Attorney has reviewed the agreement.
That's correct, the County Attorney has reviewed this interlocal agreement and has advised Mr. Garcia and myself that he had no, um, issues with the interlocal agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point two six, discussion and appropriate action, approval to publicly election order, election notice, notice of testing tabulation equipment, purchase election-related supplies, printing, coding, official ballots, programming, rep of election and number clerks per precinct on election day, hiring a deputy clerk for voting clerks, election day clerks, early voting ballot board, central counting station, hourly wage to be at fifteen dollars an hour, and authorization to request law enforcement presence at any election administration venue.
Judge, Commissioner, this could be our relevant checklist that I prepare for each election.
What, questions, questions?
Did you, uh, the last time I spoke to you, uh, did you put Marky on you? Or the IT guy, or you can do whatever you want?
Uh, well.
I think we were in discussion in regards to.
Yeah, it can be part of the expenses, that's what.
Right.
The good part with this, uh, type of agreement is that we share equal expenses.
Oh, okay.
Because we have. Yeah, because we have to, we have to put it before the school, the school board too, because we have to share the expenses. That's why we're doing that, we did that interlocal agreement.
So that means, uh, if he's in the, we could, we could, we could, uh, give you.
No, it'll be, um, shared costs. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? Well, we haven't offici, we have not officially appointed him Commissioner, but when we decide to appoint him or if the school district agrees, then you would abstain. This is just the, the preliminary stuff that we needed to approve so that he can start that process. Correct, Mr. Garcia? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Three point two seven, discussion and appropriate action, approve enrollment in the interlocal purchasing system tips for purchasing. Motion by Commissioner Juan Calmona, second by Commissioner Lugo Cava, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, review and accept new contract proposal for tax office for UBO Business Service Contract Conica Minota Biz Hub three sixty I copier and closeout form release contract.
Good afternoon, um, we've been, uh, having issues with the current copier we have. And, uh, once I contacted the, uh, I guess the vendor, the previous contract fell through the cracks, I guess. Uh, we're on a month-to-month basis right now. So he proposed, he sent me this proposal for a new lease with a new copier.
Currently, Ms. Sandoval, you have UBO already?
Yes.
So this is just to transition into a different copier?
A different copier, yeah, a different, uh, agreement.
Does it go on with the two thirty-five includes the color, or it's just black and white?
Black and white, we don't use color at all.
But it doesn't have color on it?
No.
Do we have the previous contracts, Ms. Sandoval?
No.
We don't have the previous contract?
No, the gentleman that we made the contract with, he left the company, like, right out there.
So do we know this is an increase in price from the previous contract?
It, actually, right now, I pay two sixty-one monthly, so it's a decrease.
It's a decrease.
So with this, it'll close out any previous contract I had with, with the copier I have right now.
I just wanna make sure that we're not, like, left on the hook for something, if we're early terminating it to change, convert.
That's right, on the, what he, I, what in there, it's, it's gonna include to close out any contract.
Other questions?
It was just, I'm worried that we're losing a lot of people, so what I, my suggestion would be that we go ahead and, and accept it, but give it to the County Attorney, it's going to review the contract, make sure we're, we're in a, 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 if, if something goes wrong, we can get it here in Dimon County, and that's all.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll request the contract.
Hey, with the judge and Mr.
Thomas.
Gonzalez can look it over, and also make sure you tell him that you want it. Or send to his, the, his.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But you can keep up with all the.
With this, with this one, I didn't do the contract, so.
I know, I, I, I understand, but since you're gonna get it.
Yes, no, with this one.
Protect you and protect us, go ahead, and tell him, give me a, give me a copy.
Okay.
So are we, are you, are we wanting to table it? So that we can get the contract, or?
But, uh, once they review, it'll be all right, if there's something, because it's subject to.
So you wanna approve it subject to the.
Call the County Attorney and the County Judge.
So the motion will be to approve it, subject to the review of the contract by the County Attorney and the County Judge. Motion by Commissioner Juan Calmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lugo Cava. If there is any issues or concerns, we'll, we'll put it back on the agenda, Ms. Sandoval.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Three point two nine, discussion and appropriate action, COVID policy for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
This is just to see if you wanna continue the ten days of COVID pay for, uh, this coming fiscal year.
I'm just one bold and I say yes, COVID is coming.
Don't have COVID, Commissioner, it's just a really bad cough that I can't get rid of for the past month. I've been trying to, we've had the same, the cough for about a month now, and I don't know, maybe somebody wants me to lose my voice, I won't be able to talk.
You're gonna want to take all, uh, with last pay, but I think we gotta reduce it from ten to five, because a lot of people take more than they can each other.
I think that's the new, the new CDC, right, the, the recommendation is a five days, is my distinct.
I, I haven't read the recommendation.
I think that's my distinct understanding, is a five days. I have, um, Commissioner Alonso, Commissioner Urenda, we have ten days or five days?
Judge, I, I, well, I think we can motion, instead of, uh, you know, what do I prefer? I'm gonna say let's keep that ten, ten days.
Huh?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we give the ten days.
How long would it, would it take there?
Three seconds.
I have a motion from Commissioner, um, Alonso Calmona to keep it as is for ten days. And a second by Commissioner Urenda, any other discussion?
Just, uh, just for you all to know, that's why we have a lot of people that's coming back. So, say, they don't use their sick days, and, and they don't use their comp time, and we give you all ten days, and then, let's say, six months later, they get sick again, they're gonna get it.
No, they don't give their ten, another ten days, I think.
No, it's, it's ten days a year, it's ten days a year.
It's a month, I know.
Some of them got, uh, more than ten days, and we're gonna do that.
As far as I know, no.
Well, not when you were.
Oh, okay.
But not, it's supposed to be once, once a year.
Yes, and then once you run out of ten days, you're supposed to use your regular sick leave or comp.
Or comp, or whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point thirty, discussion and appropriate action for unreconciled trial one in Detness two counties before fiscal year.
This is just for, I mean, as far as I've been told, whenever you go to a, uh, training or travel, you're supposed to bring back your receipts, and we're supposed to match up whether we owe, if we owe you money, or you owe the county back money. So our fiscal year's about to end, and you can't really pay back or give them a refund if the year's already over, so I just.
I, I, I know I have a debt on there, but I'm still researching my, my, uh, travel on that. Because I never got a, a receipt from the hotel. And that was one of the problems that I'm facing right now with the debt, because never got a receipt. I called, called them and called them, and they're not willing to send another receipt.
Right, I, I'm not trying to, like, put anything.
No, 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 I know, but I, that's why I'm saying that I'm one of it.
Okay.
But, uh, and it's close to the, to the, but I've been working on it and working with that hotel, and because we paid for the parking, and they say, we're, so we're going back and forth. But I, I will reconcile regardless.
Okay.
If I do or not, but just so you know, uh, once I clearly, if I owe you, I owe you, it's not a funny get reimbursed.
Right, and I, I just wanna know what we're gonna do with the reconciliation, I mean, once the new fiscal year starts, what, y'all, it's up, it's up to y'all, what y'all wanna do.
Well, if it's not being, if it's not submitted, then we can't pay, if anybody's seeking a reimbursement, essentially.
It's basically okay if you don't turn your receipts in, because we're never gonna go after you, or?
Say it again?
If, I mean, so, like, is it that, I mean, you don't turn your receipts, so we can't do anything, so you just, it's like forgiven, basically? That's the question.
You can forgive it, how do you have to turn in your receipt?
That's what you're thinking.
We're turning them in.
All right, not everyone.
No, but if, if they, if they don't turn them in, he wants to know what he needs to do if they don't turn them in.
Right, plus they can.
So I'm saying if they don't turn it in, then let's say, for instance, Commissioner will owe you him, for example. Is that if he doesn't turn it in, and he feels like he's issued, he's needing to be issued a, a return or reimbursement, and he's just not gonna be able to get it, because there's not a receipt to reconcile it with his owe to Commissioner.
So you're gonna do it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure, or the other way around. You do, you do turn in your receipt, and it turns out the county gave you too much money for the training, and you owe hundred, two hundred dollars. But I mean, it's gonna be the next fiscal year, so what are we gonna do in that case?
I'd be the director of pages, I know better, they, they, they should turn in, I mean, I, I can't see somebody forgetting about it.
Yes, Mr. Pedira.
Okay, what we've done in the past usually is, and I was going to, so he said, that when you get two billing quick, basically you do not get the next one coming in until you turn the next one in, or the previous one in, and usually that's worked out. We really can't forgive anything, uh, because of the county, and so everything from turning in the past, I don't think there's been anything owed, because we get audited on that too.
And I think this is the first year of the, I mean, I had that front, I think that's.
And I know that we've kind of been hectic around here and everything, so, but we just need to keep up with.
Right, because I, I, I mean, I, I do have a big binder of people, not just this fiscal year, previous year, that, they're just dead, they're just debts that.
It's been from previous years that weren't turned in.
Previous years, or?
Yes, they're from previous years as well that have not, were not turned in.
Is that, okay.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, I have, like, a good side binder of other people who, they haven't turned their receipts, or they haven't paid back the debts, and like, what are we gonna do when October comes?
We need to get, we need to pull them, we need to get it paid, either from the paycheck or someplace.
Well, I, I can't do a deduction unless there's an authorization.
Well, when you get an authorization, from the, the person, yes.
From, from that person.
So that's basically what they sign up for when they do it, so. We look at it and try to settle.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
But just for the record.
So just for the record, the, the, the policy will remain as it should have been in years past, where. So just for the record, the 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 policy will remain as it should have been in years past where it just.
Well, well, I mean, there's nothing really written down, there's no written down policy, that's kind of why I mentioned it about a month ago, and then now we're here.
So I guess it was just common practice before that everyone should turn in, but there's no policy that states that they must or shall turn it in.
And just for the record, we'll take care of it, that's just.
No, I I understand.
Well, not this state statute, I mean, we can't vote now, so I mean, it doesn't even possible.
So there's no action to be taken, Mister Perez. Three point thirty one, discussion appropriate action, approval for the three sixty fifth clerk, Jimena Lopez, to attend TCIC TLETS full access training on September eleventh through the fourteenth in Austin, Texas.
Um, so the training is basically in regards to a new law that was that went into effect as of last year. Um, I'm sorry. It bas- basically states that in order for the judge to set or adjust a bill, aside from the ones that are on the original indictment, he needs to have access to the public safety research. Um, and that's basically like a more detailed criminal background history. Um, and so right now, we for the judge to be approved, he's basically given like a license and then afterwards, he can go ahead and add someone else from the office to be um to have access to the criminal background history as well, that would be me. Um, we're currently pending in the um, depending, I'm sorry, the Department of County Sheriff's Office to provide provide us with that information. Um, in order to get the PSRS from them, we have to go through a process, which is um making a letter, sending it out to them, and then waiting on them to give it back to us, if you go from getting it the same day to getting it the tenth day, depending on their availability. Um, and then once the set is adjusted or reset, uh, we would have to go back into the criminal history and make those changes as to the new amount of bill.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Luca. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries, thank you, ma'am. Four point one, discussion appropriate action, approval for Cesar Martinez to attend the K nine handler course twenty twenty three G detection in Laverne in Texas, September twenty fifth through October the sixth. Only requesting for travel meals, only requesting for travel of meals, course is going to be paid out of the sheriff's forfeiture account. Well, because one is for Cesar and the other one's for Luis Carmona. Is this amount share of the seven hundred fifty dollars for meals?
That's correct.
That's just for for one person?
Yes, and um, but in Cesar, his uh combinations are included with the uh training.
Oh, one has the hotel.
But it's 'cause they're they're different.
They're both staying together?
Yes, the same hotel, but since the other canine is being paid for by Grant also, that's why it didn't include the the hotel, he is.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff, these two gentlemen are your canine.
That's correct.
Have they signed a contract?
I believe so.
Mister Carmona did sign a contract, I we approved a contract with Mister Carmona back in, I believe it was April or May, something to that effect for the, not with Mister Martinez.
I believe he's already had that canine for two, three years already, and just wanted, just we're gonna replace the one that died, the dog that died in the summer.
So Sheriff, what what occurred here at Commissioner's Court before your appointment was that the policy for Dimi County changed that any um individual that had canine had to sign a contract with the um county, that they would stay as uh canine handler and stay in in the county for a period of two years um before um they were able to leave because of the the issue that was happening in the past was the county was paying for the course, and which you very well know is in the thousands, and then the individual would leave. So there was an issue that was put before the court in terms of wanting for us to have some kind of um retention plan, and that's why that contract was signed, and I know with Mister Carmona, which is the next item, he in fact did sign the contract. Um, but however, there is no contract for Mister Martinez. So that's what Commissioner Luca was bringing up, uh, which I I agree, at some point, we need to get a contract with him if he's gonna get the new dog.
Yes, and I did ask him when his dog passed away, he is, well, he does want it because he does work at the port of entry, and that's where that dog comes in handy also with the port, and a lot of the seizures, they've been been helping us a lot. But I'll talk to him on it, and I mean, he he didn't want another dog, so I'm sure he'll go into signing the contract also. But he's already been the, I believe, canine with a previous dog for like over two years with that dog.
So for this item, you're requesting for the Commissioner's Court to approve for the meals?
That's correct, 'cause the class will be through the forfeiture funds, the trainings.
Any other questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point two, discussion appropriate action approval for Luis Carmona to attend the K nine handler course twenty twenty three G detection in Laverne in Texas, September twenty fifth through October sixth. Only requesting travel for hotel and meals, the course will be paid from forfeiture account. And this is someone that's different, Commissioner Carmona, because it's um paying for the hotel.
And the hotel wasn't included on his, 'cause it's through a grant, so they're paying, the grant is paying the canine, and just we're paying the the extras for having the tracking dog and then the uh the handler training, we gotta pay that, but the dog itself is paid through the grant.
So so who's who's signed the contract already?
Carmona has one signed already.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Luca, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention?
I see.
Abstain abstention by Commissioner Alonso Carmona and abstention by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion carries. Discussion appropriate action, approval for Eva Stamps, Jonathan Zaldania to attend the identification and documentation of bloodstain patterns at crime scenes course in Del Rio, Texas.
This one, Judge, also is just gonna be for the meals and for the uh course itself, uh, they both decided to drive back and forth. They they they're gonna drive back and forth, they stay in Del Rio, just for the meals and for the uh course.
Did you submit two of them, Sheriff?
Yes, it should be Jonathan Zaldania and Eva Stamps.
I I only have Eva's. The uh the voucher, the, I see, I got it, thank you. Motion by Commissioner, was that you, Commissioner De Luca? Commissioner De Luca.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion?
Sheriff, isn't you saying you only requesting the hundred eighty for meals, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and in the the class of four hundred is for the the courses, the course is not free, you have to pay back.
Can I requesting travel because they're gonna use the county vehicle?
Yes.
Only the one you need the four hundreds.
But the way you said it, only the meals, and the whole.
And the course.
And the quick, you said and the course.
Right. That's fine, just a simple question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion appropriate action, approval for a hundred and twenty thousand BTU tilting gas skillet and connection gas oven fan, water performance food services for forty five thousand eighty one and twenty two.
On the quote you have here, it's just the last time we came by, it was a question of it being ninety BTUs or a hundred twenty, but it is the uh hundred and twenty BTU uh that is required and we need for for that commercial one. It's actually replacing the same two that we actually have right now with a hundred and twenty BTUs, because of both of those forty uh forty five thousand.
Sheriff, but I'm 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 on your quotes, you got twenty thirty one thousand, correct? No, no, thirty one thousand for for the, I guess it'd be the same thing, 'cause it's a hundred and twenty.
The thirty one thousand wasn't for the skillet.
Well, this is what I have right here.
You're only skilling in the in the oven, how to total together is forty five thousand eighty one hours and twenty two cents.
Twenty six.
The oven is gonna be thirteen thousand six hundred thirty dollars and seventy six cents.
How much?
Thirteen thousand six hundred thirty dollars and seventy six cents.
I understand, but let me show you, Sheriff. Be careful, you're forty five thousand.
Well, I'm telling you for both of them, that's right, but it should be just a thirteen dollar, you approved the the uh
Right.
You approved the skillet's last meeting.
So actually, we're going with the thirty one thousand, right? 'Cause this is the hundred and twenty BTU that you requested.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a ninety, so that's the same problem we had the last time, question.
That's that's the one you're talking, it is the oven, we're talking about the skillet, the skillet is the one that I was, it was like they get the.
You look for the skillet. Thirteen dollars.
Yes, this one, and then the other pressure people, the forty five dollars, why they have it, it should just be the thirteen thousand.
I understand what you're talking about. That's what I'm trying, but the way you have it, you should.
Yeah, 'cause they shouldn't have put the forty five together.
No, okay. So I'm just trying to make myself hard to understand.
But the, yeah, and the skillet was approved last, right?
Right, so that's.
The unit is amount the thirteen thousand, right?
Yes, sir. Okay, so we're pulling the thirteen thousand.
Yeah, the thirteen thousand, the thirty one thousand.
You go this door, you have. They they approved last. The other way, the the other one's only BTU, you know? Okay, you do have thirty, that's right. It was in thirty one, it was in thirty. The thirteen thousand, both of them. See, what you think, oh, it's forty five, you need to give it every game. Yeah, so it's just correct, correct your request, I think, you're just.
So. What is it, Commissioner?
You put the forty five thousand dollars equally in both, the one for thirteen thousand, the one for thirty one for forty eight. You should have just put thirty one thousand, forty eight and forty six cents, because he told both of them to put it down or not. But the previous one was already approved, the thirteen thousand, so we're approving today the thirty one thousand. Not the forty five would be with the quote.
Yes, ma'am. So. Are you asking the Commissioner's Court to approve the a hundred and twenty thousand dollar BTU tilting, a hundred and twenty thousand BTU tilting gas skillet and convection? No, that's not the way it should read.
That's why I was telling you to correct it.
It should be just a tilting skillet.
So you're asking for just a skillet?
Yeah, the oven was approved, that's what.
So you're you're, the appropriate request is that you're asking the Commissioner's Court to approve the a hundred and twenty thousand BTU tilting gas skillet.
The amount of.
From, okay, but you have on here from payable to performance food services, but on here I have vendor Wasser Stream Restaurant Store and Chef's Deal.
Yes, 'cause uh Performance is the same company, but have a different name, so Performance is the one that's getting it first. So it has to be payable to Performance, that's where I was leading advice.
They're gonna come and stop it. Add with the the.
But that's not how we approved the last one, Mister Perez.
So as if I can have a Commissioner go back to page six plus seven, and the, and your reminders. And these particular items were kind of historically discussed, and in the end, what I gathered was they were both capable. So I would recommend to go by how the wording is on this agenda to combine both of them.
But we don't have the other one now. We don't have the other one now, so Mister Commissioner, me and Mister Garcia, the county clerk, is saying as per his minutes, we didn't even vote on approving the other one.
You voted, Judge, but the table.
We voted to table, not to approve. Both of them. And we don't have the new quotes for the the new quotes for the oven?
I remembered that we said we tabled, she didn't have the right code, but then we said let's go ahead and approve it, subject for her showing the information to you and Mister Perez. I think that's why we got confused.
'Cause one of them was a ninety BTU, so it probably is.
Right.
But the ninety BTUs are for the skillet, 'cause you see on the skillet, it says ninety thousand BTU, ninety thousand BTU, and then that Wasser Stream Company has a hundred and twenty BTUs.
That that's what.
The issue that I have is for purposes of audit team, when we audit, is that we're approving this company, but we're making a check to somebody else. That's that's the concern I have for auditing purposes, and Mister Perez, correct? That's what he's telling me as well.
So we got it for somebody else than Performance.
Because, but is Performance the installer, is that a different price?
No, Performance is the one that's getting us the the skillet and the with this company. And then he advised me that, well, it's the third company too, so he's the one that's getting it.
They're the ones right now working on all our equipment, they've been working that jail for the.
So who's the payment, who's the payment to vote to?
Performance.
And the quote's from Performance?
No, the quote's not from Performance.
No.
The quote's from Wasser.
Performance gave me, they're the ones that gave me the the quote. They're the ones that gave me the the quotes.
So why, so why did you put Performance, I mean, it's the.
I'm sorry?
If they gave you the quote, you you you, Sheriff, when you hear. It's very simple, Judge. I mean, you got the one. They're the ones that have the exact, I mean, I'm running, that's what I'm saying, huh? You want me to say anything? A hundred and twenty, it's one fifteen miles, our very small, if you're better than that, one in the company. But not the same amount, but you know, the duty call. The company, but not the same amount, but you know, the duty call, that's the, you call people supply, they don't have it. No response. Or, uh, those, they don't have it. You must have approved, that's what you fly, and the other one was simply, but from the company, that's the issue. No, I'm saying, we can have a quote, and then pay the, pay the check for somebody else. The other company says that. Sheriff, you don't have a, a, it's like, if there's not a, a, a buy board, um, department where you can provide any of this stuff?
They should be in the buy board, I'll double check this.
Because I, I was, I, I mean, there's a, there's a, all kinds of, I think there's one where they sell restaurant suppliers and stuff. I mean, you can, if you go to buy board, you have to go through the.
They should be in the buy board. I'll double check, but see, if Michael say one of the restaurant suppliers, they're gonna have to get somebody else to come and, and assign on that. They'll come in.
Have you checked with them, do they run the buy board?
Performance? Object, I got the list on the office, I got it from, I believe they are, I think, I think I checked them, they should be on it, I'll double check.
It's a lot easier to give approval, because they are on the board.
But I have the list here on my computer, the buy board vendors, and I think that it's, I'll check that they should be on it.
And if they have it, if they're part of the work, that still has prospecting. Very simple, just get that name of the company, the other company is that they say. I mean, it's what, fifth capital that is. She running out of birds, she's like, I'm gonna convert it. So just get the name, and put it under it, even though this is other companies, part of the other one, just put the name.
See, I have to, they should be in the buy board.
Crazy. Just don't even make it best, Sheriff.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On this, the last one also, take it, so I didn't have it, because it was, it was in the end of month. Office. On the citation, some of these, they have been, uh, I mean, uh, still short handed with Jager, so I've been using some of the different traffic, patrol, transport, so, but some of these are not as high.
Sheriff, which ones are your?
Traffic to the Bean. Lopez, this is Lopez. Hassan. And the other one is, uh, Danza. And I'm waiting to bring back, uh, Rusty Garcia, he'll be coming back.
And who was he?
He, he's planning to bring back Rusty. Rusty, he's.
He was waiting for his three months also to come back. Okay, son.
No, he's not.
No, he's not.
No, he's Hassan.
Pretty unusual, isn't it?
No, well.
That's just Lopez. Thank you, Sheriff.
Also, in the next meeting, uh, I'll be bringing back, because I do have, uh, some of the, uh, Jagers that applied. The only thing is, our psychologists were usually retired. I don't have any psychologists. We did have one contract, but they, they, they won't accept it until October. Um, the one that was recommended from Mr. Sheriff Alinas, is one that he uses. He's also retired, but he covers five counties. And he's willing to do that, so I'll bring in the next Commissioners' Court, see if I can get approval to use him, so I can start ordering, uh, Jagers and transport arms. Because I do have some that, they put applications in, but I cannot get any paper done, because they need a psychol- psychological exam first, and the other three signed off before we can hire them, so, uh, by the time we found out that they're retired, it was too late to actually have this on the agenda for this one, so I'll have to put it for the next meeting to approve, so we can start using them.
I would like to be a psychiatrist for them, Judge. When I, this is a true story, when I, when I went to the academy, you know, they do that, and the instructor, only told me to do this much, but he was the instructor, he must turn me the finger and everything, and I dropped it, and I was gonna pull him up, and he said, no, 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 don't do that, it was like, you're a mechanic, I can do it. So he, he kept telling me on, on that part, but, you know, I think there's psychiatrists that can be good hands.
We've had like six come in already, and five, but just we can't do anything, so we can't deal with it for.
Yep. Thank you, Sheriff. Discussion in appropriate action, budget adjustment within the Sheriff's Department.
The last item was the oven, Commissioner.
Sheriff, just a quick question on that budget adjustment. Um, I see that you're bringing in, to bring to the, on the Sheriff's uniforms, are we, are we looking at getting new uniforms, or why?
No, these are the, uh, through the uniforms company that, to pay them right now, the, uh, I don't know why they have it in the Sheriff's uniform, but it's the Sheriff, the department uniform that the deputy uses pants. That, that's what that's for. I think we're still under contract with them, uh, I'm trying to see if we can find something different, maybe different, the little blue jeans fade real bad, but this is, uh, bill of life outstanding right now with them.
Is that for you, you first?
Yes. Not only put Sheriff's uniform.
Do we not, it wasn't budgeted for that amount, Mr. Pereda, or why are we over?
Because, remember when we were having trouble? That was the issue we were having trouble, because we're having to purchase the colors.
Yes.
The pants, the work, we're having to purchase some, that's why he was looking to change the color.
No, I know, but why, why are we over on the budget with uniforms, is my question.
Because we were not supposed to be, oh, at this amount, but it's, we just, we have continued with uniforms with the same issue, and so we haven't come back to adjust it. It's something that we were supposed to address before.
I don't understand. I know we owe the bill, but what I'm trying to figure out is, what does the pants have to do with it?
Because it's more expensive with this, with this company, having to get them, than.
I apologize.
Than what we, yeah. Because it's been, uh, it's become an issue because of the pants are coming out more expensive, and so we didn't budget for doing that, but we continue to have them.
Um, my question is, why are we having to purchase it?
Because to get, to.
That's not true.
Because what happens is, to get, the pant, the people that come in with the pants, what they're doing is they're keeping them instead of having them brought, uh.
Returning them.
The individuals that leave.
Yeah, so, so we have them available for people that come in, but then why they take forever to get the pants in, and so that's why it's coming out more expensive.
But they, uh, but, but employees leave, there's also the return, everything.
We understand that, but that's one of the things that the Sheriff's office was doing, they were keeping them, because then what would happen is that the new people coming in didn't have anything, were wearing just regular blue jeans instead of these, the colored pants, but the rest of the, uh.
Sheriff, we're not just jeans in, jeans. Well, no, that's what I'm looking into, I'm looking for a company or something to get, so you can come up with a different type of uniform pants, instead of the jeans, because even uniforms, it's hard to find that color of jeans, and they fade fast, so we're looking into right now, seeing what other type of pants we can get besides the jeans.
There's a bright star, there's bright star, there's, uh, cintas, there's.
But they don't have those.
Or we can just do the rental.
I understand that, but they don't have any of those colors.
But you're just telling me the colors don't matter, they're usually blue jean, blue jean is blue jean, no?
Because that's why they're keeping them, instead of returning them, because they don't have them available, and so they have this.
I understand. Who's keeping the pants?
The Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department.
I guess they've been doing that since they couldn't get pants, so say, somebody leaves, they turn in their equipment, they turn them in. They hire somebody else, if they fit into the jeans, they're using those jeans, I mean, because it's, they can't get the new uniforms.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sheriff, but I told my employees, when I hired them, you returned those eleven pants and those eleven shirts? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Or else I'm gonna fall on you for that, because this is government property. This is not ours personally.
They're turning them in. They are turning them in.
But can you say your word?
They're turning them in, they're turning them in to the Sheriff's Department.
You just said they're not turning them in?
No, we're not turning them in to uniforms.
Well, why not?
Because we can't.
Give them back.
We can't get them back, the ones, the new person comes in, so we go, we basically have a.
So their uniforms essentially is charging us because we're keeping them.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but.
He's saying to give them back, so they won't charge us.
And they're still being used, though, deputies, they're, they're not, I mean, they're still being used from the officers that are out there, not to be used.
I'm a little bit dumb, but not dead dumb, Pereda, you know, we, you, they return them and we keep them, so it's our fault that we're keeping them, correct?
Well, we're keeping them because we hand them out to people that are coming in.
Oh, why did you?
So we're using them.
The company's supposed to be a rental company, not, not a purchasing company. We can go there in decades, we can instruct that Sheriff to go to, to JCPenney or somewhere where they're cheaper, and they can buy whatever pants they want.
But the rental, they're still being charged rent, so that's the thing.
Well, that's what, we're, we're buying them, and they will pay rent.
We're not buying them, we're renting them.
Right, but when you, when they give them, you have to pay for them.
But really, in the long run, if you really look at the expense, we bought those pants.
Yeah, that's right.
And we, we already have bought two pants, even though they're charging us rent and money, I think that's.
We're keeping the pants, and, and personally, I don't know why we don't return them, because.
No.
We got, well, here, hold on. Personally, when you rent something, you want the officer to fit in them. If nobody fits in them, we're still paying the rent, or they just being there.
They are fitting them, so that's what we're doing, that's.
But that's what I'm saying.
That's what Sheriff's office is doing, okay, yeah.
If I get a pair of pants and they don't fit me, that means I gotta hamstring my, hem them up or whatever, but it's gonna come out expensive, because once you return it to the company, they're gonna say, hey, you got a thirty four by.
Oh, I'm not thirty four.
I just say, I'm a thirty, a thirty four by, by thirty eight, or by thirty, or whatever, but now I got a thirty four by twenty. You know what I mean? And we're still gonna be charged because, you know, we're not returning the proper item.
And the contract's coming up, I haven't renewed it, nothing, which probably won't.
That's my point.
I understand, but that's what we're doing, that's what they're doing, so.
But do you, do you understand, we're still paying for those pants, and we already bought them.
I understand that, but that's why we're doing it.
Like that's what we're in, is predicting we are in ten thousand dollars.
I understand that, but that's why they're doing it, that's why they're doing it.
I mean, it's not, it's.
It's not, it's.
It's just.
Brown color.
Brown color and yellow, we turn it over, that's it.
Now, we had this discussion, Sheriff, with Mr. Pereda, correct, about possibly changing the uniform, because those brown jeans are very hard to acquire, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. I'm trying to see what, something like DPS, those coyote colored ones, or, uh, kind of green is what we're trying to look at, but they're not blue jeans, you know, they're a different type.
They're different types.
They will not fade like the jeans pose, so that lasts a long time.
Sheriff, what I do, like, I got a part timer that I don't buy, that, that I don't rent these uniforms. Okay, he gets four uniforms, I mean, four, four pants, and, and, and four shirts, okay? What I do is I buy them outright, okay? They all sell them to you outright. So what I do, I buy those four pants, at forty two dollars a piece, which is a hundred and sixteen, I come out ahead, and then I buy the four shirts, or they're charging for the logo and everything else, but when you leave, you see those pants there, but they already been paid for, they, he uses them for three years, four years, because they don't use it in the mind, you know?
This is the easy way to go.
No, but they, they still want, the company still washes them too, or cleans them.
Why? If, 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 we're gonna keep them? You say, we're not renting them exactly, we're buying them outright.
I know, but they're cleaning them also, the ones that are being used, the other ones that are stored, as far as the ones that are using them.
I don't have a problem with them, you, but what I'm trying to say is correct the problem. Hey, that's right, that's right, that's right, and.
That's, that's where you're trying to change it, uniforms, so we can not go through this, okay?
But that, I, that's what I'm trying to figure out, where we can save you headaches also, because.
No, no, but this. This is something that's been used, they've been used to uniforms for, you know, years, and, you know, even before they've been used, I'm trying to change that, see what was we doing to. So we don't have to go through this.
But see, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm not, because. You spend the money, I'm not saying, because those people know better where, where you get them from, than also rent, and once you return, they're supposed to take them off, that, that is, and give you credit for whatever you have. That's the way it's supposed to be.
But, to keep it, that's a deal, because there was no other uniform, they don't have nothing available, until I can change something, they wouldn't go to that.
How did you approve?
I'm sure the, he just took off this, so the column will get fixed, eventually it'll get fixed. It's something that has been happening prior to being, being announced. So, just do what you have to do, correct the column, and move forward. That's all you have to do. If you need to change them, change them, do whatever you have to do. Just make sure in your budget, it's the amount that you have, because you, for this budget, you were budgeted eighteen thousand dollars. Before you took off this, they had already spent twenty one thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's why you're negative. It's not your fault. This was previous administration, that's why they were negative.
I agree on that.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clean docket. General Fund, eight ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and seventy five cents, Demet County Clerk, one thousand, two hundred and ninety one and twenty seven cents. Demet County District Clerk, seven thousand, four hundred and seventy six and forty cents. Demet County Airport, fifty, forty two dollars, excuse me, and fifteen cents. Demet County Golf Course, ten thousand, three hundred and seventy and eighty six cents. Courthouse Security, three thousand, one hundred and twenty nine and six cents. Records Management, one thousand, forty five and forty four cents. Utilities, forty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine and four cents. Equitable sharing and forfeiture procedures, nineteen thousand, nine hundred. Stone Garden, thirty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy nine and fifty one cents. Demet County Payroll, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty three and ninety eight cents. COs, twenty eighteen, one hundred and fourteen, five hundred dollars and sixty three cents. COs, twenty nineteen, four thousand, seven hundred and ninety eight and sixty nine cents. COs, twenty twenty one, one hundred and twenty three thousand, ninety five dollars and forty six cents, for a grand total of one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty four cents. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will, um, entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular meeting.
Uh, Judge, can, can we go back to three eleven, please? Twelve minutes, guys. Uh, ever since we've, well, ever since I found out about this whole ambulance contract situation, I had a bad feeling about it, and I thought today was gonna make me feel better about it, but it hasn't, I've been thinking about it all day, and just to cover myself, because I don't feel like, I'm questioning the legality of it, and the treasure is held liable for money going in and out, so I'm just asking for, if y'all can, basically, for order me to sign it to resolve me of my, any liability, in case it is not needed.
We have to, we have to do a budget amendment, and.
We can have a budget amendment to, to cover the amount.
Which amount?
The amount.
That's why I was asking earlier if I can know the exact amount, so I can, if I'm a little less, I can check.
Where the amount will be to cover the car portion and the, they're saying that we're liable for money, but six hundred thousand dollars minus the city's portion. It will be, three months, three months.
No, no habit, because the city's gonna be paying, so from that amount, you take out the hundred forty-four thousand dollars, so the city's gonna be reimbursed, so you take that out. I understand that, but, so you take up, okay, but suppose you make up another, on your.
I'm just asking, is, I'm questioning, and I just don't feel comfortable signing.
Yeah, but we would, the maximum that we would have would be the six hundred thousand dollars minus. Minus three hundred, no, so otherwise, if it would have been three hundred thousand dollars, it would be a possible amount, right, today? I understand that, but the part, that is, the part the city's paid, portions a hundred forty-four thousand there.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, going forward, I don't feel comfortable signing the check, because I don't want any liability coming to me. That's why I'm asking for a court order to remove my liability.
When, when this court approves it to get paid, that's an order to you.
It's not necessary.
Yes, yeah, you don't, you can't, the only one who would have would be me to not pay it.
No, I, I, I can't see, I'm actually the one charging this person.
I know, I know, but they're the ones that are trying to disperse it.
Right, but sometimes you're stuck there too, when you don't get it right, because you're questioning, why is it all in?
Yeah, because I have, because I have authority, I do have authority, no, no, you don't.
Why is it, Pereda, I'm just, this is between you two, Ross.
Yeah, no, I have.
We, we would like to know what, the clarification that you're having between you guys, so that we know where we're at in terms of moving forward.
Okay, on issuing a bill, the county auditor can question it, and we will be responsible if anything happens. Commissioner's Court actually gives, we all approved the claim docket, that's an order to, to the county treasurer to issue that check.
Correct.
Right, so that's all we're saying, so I'm gonna do the budget adjustment, and that should clarify.
But it's not a budget adjustment, a budget amendment.
Oh, budget amendment.
Because we did not, um, budget for that amount.
So we're gonna budget adjustment for that amount? Amendment, sorry.
But from what I've learned from Sack is the claim docket isn't necessarily a court order, it's just the money going out, and auditor can question your expenditure, but I can question the legality, and right now, I'm questioning the legality of it. I don't feel comfortable signing the check going forward anymore, that's why I'm asking for you all to resolve.
So you don't feel comfortable signing the check for Victory because of what?
Because we've already paid them over five hundred thousand, and are technically, our contracts are only three hundred.
It was, I think, like, three hundred thousand.
And that's why, that's why I'm, not knowing this when I first started, that all these contracts happened before I started, but going forward now, I don't feel comfortable going forward.
Do something to, uh, lead to, just the county attorney about this?
We can ask the county attorney for.
For certification, please.
I, I thought that the agreement was that the judge was gonna look into it, and then it's immediately a cop, he was gonna call an attorney, that we, we know what we're doing.
Right, so we're not, and we're not.
We're not gonna keep, we're not gonna keep, whenever the judge gives us the respond, then we're gonna go forward.
So, so you're not, um.
Well, Mr. Ortiz, let me clarify one thing, we will not vote for something that is illegal.
Well, no, I'm not saying that you think it's legal.
Right, so if you think they're gonna mess the ball, I don't mess the ball, it is my fault, I'll, I'll take the blame.
Right, but.
So that's sure that we'll, we'll protect you, we'll protect the judge, we'll protect the other commissions, before we do anything wrong.
Right, but, I mean, I'm not trying to bring this up, but we all thought we were doing what was right last meeting, or whenever we got approved for the truck, and we almost got in trouble for it, and that's why I'm trying to protect myself, so I don't get in trouble for it.
There was nothing wrong with the truck.
Well, I think.
It, it's over, it wasn't over fifty thousand, it was just a misunderstanding that they put the wrong, wrong word in there, that was the only thing.
Okay, also by taking it as, we've already paid them five hundred thousand, five hundred forty-four thousand, we have that, we paid three hundred thousand of ours, we paid a hundred, a hundred forty-four thousand to the city of, we don't, we don't consider that part of the three hundred thousand, because we said that was receivable. Now, in order to continue paying them, we're gonna do a budget adjustment to increase the three hundred thousand, to make it part of.
And that's strictly for this fiscal year, because next fiscal year, that's when we're supposed to meet with the attorney, because our contract only said three hundred thousand.
The three hundred thousand dollars we don't, the reason it's showing us both five forty-four is because we have not taken out the hundred forty-four thousand, but the city's gonna pay, because that becomes an account receivable.
Right, so five forty-four minus one forty-four is still four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, but we do. It'll be three hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have to pay this year, period, three hundred.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there, no matter where the money came from, we have already paid Victory over five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand dollars has left our bank account to go to Victory, that's why I'm questioning the legality of to keep paying, and I don't wanna be held liable for anymore, now that knowing all this, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable unless I'm released liable, or I go get outside counsel, so I'm more comfortable signing.
Well, you've got, okay, so a hundred forty-four thousand, a hundred twenty-four thousand is two eighty-eight. Okay, we're gonna up, we're gonna up it to six hundred thousand dollars, right, regardless of what it is.
No.
No, no.
No.
Whatever the portion is pending for us this year.
Just this year.
This year, right, but that's, that's what these are gonna be, this year.
Yes, so this year, they were supposed to get paid six hundred thousand, however, Demet County only budgeted two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, is that correct, Commissioner De Volcav?
Two ninety-four.
Two hundred and ninety-four, y'all didn't even budget three hundred, y'all budgeted two hundred and ninety-four thousand. The understanding that the commissioners had, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, and the understanding that Mrs. Bettis from Victory Ems had, was that the city was to pay three hundred thousand, county was to pay three hundred thousand, that's six hundred. However, the contract that was adopted by this court previously was for the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand only. So there's still a remainder of a hundred and fifty-six thousand that nobody, nobody, not the city, not the county, said they were going to incur that cost, because y'all didn't, the commissioners' court did not approve three hundred thousand, y'all approved two ninety-four, so we're even short six.
Six thousand.
Six thousand, from the three hundred, so there's a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
A hundred and fifty-six thousand is a.
No, no, no. One hundred and fifty-six thousand is what's left, that nobody has said they were going to accept that accountability on that payment.
Right.
The three hundred thousand that's on the contract to pay, Demet County only budgeted two hundred and ninety-four thousand, so we're still even short six thousand there to make three hundred thousand. You understand what I'm saying, Commissioner? You understand what I'm saying? Because it's, three hundred thousand is what they thought was supposed to be budgeted, three hundred thousand was not budgeted, so Demet County still owes six thousand, exactly, so it's one sixty-two. Exactly, so it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand that is out there, that not the county, not the city, has said we're gonna pay for. So there's a hundred and sixty-two there that is owed to Victory as per the contract that Victory has with the county. But no one, the county did not approve that budget for that amount, so there's a hundred and sixty-two left. What Mr. Ortiz, and correct me if I'm wrong, is saying is that the hundred and sixty-two that we earlier said that we were all approved to do a budget amendment, to pay the hundred and sixty-two, to make them whole, Mr. Ortiz is saying he's not comfortable paying that a hundred and sixty-two thousand that's left, whatever that number looks like in terms of what's left of this fiscal year, he does not want to pay that, unless there's a court order that says we're directed to pay it, because he thinks it's not legal, because the county never approved that, is that correct?
Yes, not that, well, not that I don't want them to get paid, I just feel like.
I know you don't want, I know you do not, not want them to get paid, you just, you're saying that legally you don't wanna get in trouble, because it was never approved for us to pay that additional one sixty-two.
That's correct, from the contracts and stuff that I've read that.
And as we mentioned earlier, the commissioners' court said, for this year only, we were willing to be kind enough to eat up that cost, it's gonna cost us money, because we're gonna eat up that cost for the remainder of this fiscal year. Next year, I have to get in negotiations with the city, and Victory, and see what that payment is gonna look like, reflect from the county and the city. But for right now, there's still a hundred and sixty-two thousand that's out there, and it was a mistake that was done, the court said it was a, it was a mistake that was done by the previous administration, we can't go back, so as a token of trying to rectify that problem, we're gonna eat up that cost and pay a hundred and sixty-two thousand by doing a budget amendment before the thirty-first. Mr. Ortiz does not feel comfortable paying that a hundred and sixty-two thousand, or whatever's left of this hundred and sixty-two to pay out, because he doesn't feel that we should be legally binded to pay that, and he doesn't wanna be held legally binded that he paid something that the commissioners, that the county never approved.
Well, it's gonna be, there's, I don't know why he's getting that way, because we're coming back next commissioners' court to put in the agenda, to do the budget adjustment and to approve, to pay.
And that'll be, and that'll be a court order.
That'll be a court order, but I'm trying to be able to.
But there's two payments in between that time, there's this, there's this, we have a basis.
And not, we, they can wait till we approve it, that way you feel more comfortable?
Well, that's fine, that's fine, because we still.
I mean, if they, they waited this long, they can still wait.
That's what I'm saying, because we still owe them for the second day of August, and we're gonna owe them on September fifteenth. I won't be, I won't be here the week after, so I'll be back in time for commission, next commissioners' court meeting, but that I don't feel comfortable releasing anymore, until I have that court order, or all this stuff actually gets straightened out. I'm just trying to protect myself, that's all I'm trying to do.
I think, Judge, I think, because this isn't just a normal budget amendment, like most, there's an existing contract, there's some writing, and in this shape or form, we're gonna get out of the contract and pay it more, and that's why he's trying, I understand what you're, but like what the commissioner said, we can do.
So I.
There's, there's a big story, we can.
I think the, the best way to do it is that we pay in the amount that was originally budgeted, and on the twenty-fifth, if we approve to incur that additional cost of the hundred and sixty-two, that commissioners' court votes, and approval is court order. It's a, it's an order by the court, because we're approving it, and in the interim, what I'll do is I'll get with Mr. Pereda, and yourself, Mr. Ortiz, if that makes you feel better, and we will contact the proper attorneys, and we'll contact TAC, and make sure that legally, that can be had, and if that is the case, that we can do that, and we can do it and resolve that issue by a vote through a, a, a budget amendment, then we'll do it at that time, and if we cannot, I'll bring it before the court, and we'll advise the court at that time, that we can or cannot do that. Okay?
So no payments until the next commissioners' court?
Correct, the twenty-fifth.
Judge, and I feel for the next fiscal year, for the EMS, that we just do it, our contract, our contract, and then city, forget about the city. If they want to pay for it, that's their problem, and if they don't wanna pay for it, and they bring a lot of money with citations, apparently they're making four hundred, four million dollars.
Eight million.
Eight million dollars, they can pay for it, we're being too nice to the city, and it keeps going and going, that's why we keep getting, that's where we're at over there. But who are they paying? Demet County, they don't say it's them, they blame us. So we can change, I mean, I'm sorry, but enough is enough, we're too nice with all these entities, and then we get back left.
I had a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to recess and adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The time is four fifty-nine, I am going to call to order a public facilities meeting. Let the record reflect that roll call, all individuals that were present, myself, Commissioner Jose Uranda, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Commissioner Juan Carmona, and Commissioner Valerie De Volcav are all present. One point three, approval of minutes of regular meeting, August twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, two point one, discussion of appropriate action, new business?
Judge, so, all we're doing is fixing some other stuff that we have, that will be any more than, not with one more night. That's why the bills are cutting in, but other than that, we're way ahead of schedule than. Be there. I even got a call from the DLC, and they were surprised that we're taking care of everything, we'll be all right.
Any questions?
Judge, I want to ask you, like, wait, what do you think about purchasing a towable menlic? You know that big menlic we have? It is pretty heavy and it's, it's hard, it's not, I mean, we can move it around, but it's, it's heavy and it, it breaks the floor on the trailer sometimes, what do you think about if we try to purchase a tow, the one you can hook up to the trailer, and they go about sixty foot up to the, they're, they're, I think they're handier for like the border patrol, where you can find everything, I, I just figured I'd ask you, see if we could talk about it.
Well, I think no problem, uh, I use this equipment, every time we load them up in our little boys, they're kinda everything, we break the boards or whatever.
Yeah, no, no problem, but I'll get with, I'm open for suggestions. I might fight your head out by a mobile person.
So I looked at my watch, I'm asking, what?
No, no action. Three point one, claim docket. Public safety, four thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and three cents. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, any discussion?
Judge, the bills here for the electrical, so they're gonna come in here, just so you all are aware, it's all the electrical, nothing major.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner De Volcav, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?